Good evening. I'd like to call the Waterloo Schools Board of Education meeting to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, our mission statement, which I did not ask anyone else to read, so I'm just going to. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is Item A. This is the 2022 Budget Certification Public Hearing, and I would declare that public hearing open and ask if there was anyone here this evening who wishes to address the Board, and this will be regarding just the part on the budget. And I would ask Madam Secretary if we have anyone who's registered to speak tonight?
We did not.
We did not. Okay, great. Then, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, India. And all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item then is information from individuals and delegations, and I'm guessing for that same reason, Madam Secretary, that we do not have anyone here who wishes to address the Board this evening? Okay, great. Then we can move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of six items. Item B, which is the minutes of the March 22nd, 2021 regular Board meeting. Item C, which are personnel appointments and adjustments. Item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between Board meetings. Item E, the Area Education Agency, AEA, food purchasing agreement for 2021, 2022. Item F, the Communities and Schools of Mid-America, MOU. And item G, which is the Junior Achievement Memorandum of Agreement for the 2021, 2022 school year. Can I have a motion to put those items on the table, please?
So move.
Second.
Sue and Jesse. And are there any items which Board members wish to have removed? Item C isn't Charlie? E, echo, okay. F and G. Wow, Lyle, I should have spoken up quicker on that, shouldn't I?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, then... He was looking around, and I thought, is he not going to say anything? All right. So then, all those in favor of approving items B and D, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item C, which is on page six. Lyle, is your mic on?
I move the Board of Education. Oops. What was the motion?
You're right. You said approve the personnel.
Personnel items as listed, yeah.
Excellent. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. And discussion.
Okay. Oh.
He's already up here.
Belt blast.
We're reading your mind today.
I see we've got nine resignations and one retire. Just curious if we have a handle on how many vacancies we're going to have, and it's kind of that time of year we need to do heavy recruiting if we know those numbers. So where are we in the process of knowing those numbers and being able to recruit and make offers to the folks we want to?
Absolutely. We've already started that process. I'm actually going to talk about it during the HR update, so I have some more information that you should have in front of you right now. But we had about, I believe it was 133, I don't have it in front of me right now, but 133 resignations over the course of the year.
Twenty-five of those have been teachers relatively recently, because I think many of you have
asked the questions around, you know, what's happening right now. We've already started offering positions for teachers. Some of those positions have been, you know, subs or have worked for us in some type of capacity because they were January graduates as well, and so we've been already thinking about filling those. We're going through elementary and secondary staffing right now, and those positions are coming through and they're getting their post. I mean, this is, this is the time. This is a busy time. Some of that was because of the contract. You know, normally we try to get that out faster so we can, we can really know exactly what we're looking at. But even still, I think we're in a great place where it's still enough time for our teachers to, and any staff, to participate in the interview process for those teaching positions. But we have, as I go back, I should have just brought it up here, we have an aggressive approach that we're looking at in regards to many of the administrative positions that have just come up, but also the teaching positions in, this is April, right? Yeah. In May, May, second week of May or first week of May, we're going to have another virtual fair, and that is going to be another opportunity for our principals to really engage at a high level in regards to the positions that are now open. But this is, Lyle, you've hit on the head, this is, this is our busiest time in our office. Our office is, you know, really going through it.
I have actually seen some listings. My son was looking for internships over the summer, and it pulled up a whole bunch of ones for positions already that, and I don't even know which site we're on, but it must pull it from everywhere.
Yeah.
So when is the commitment date in terms of being, committing to teaching this next year versus retirement?
So the hope is, and we have a timeline that I have my phone here, but I want to pull it up, but we have a timeline that we're looking at, a pending Board approval, that we will drop contracts on April 27th, so it's the day after the Board meeting. And then we have just a week-by-week timeline of not only getting contracts out for all the other union groups, but also, you know, making sure that we're notifying our teachers about that 21 days from that April 27th deadline. I believe the date, and somebody's going to correct me, but I think it's May 13th. It's either May 13th or May 14th was 21 days after that timeframe. And so by then, we will know clearly who has been, who's going to leave us. But that process, Lyle, for, and for everybody that doesn't know, we started that in December. So we ask our principals, Lorene sends out an email in December asking, hey, who's thinking about it? Who, who, who's, you know, considering potentially leaving or some job things changed that you know, lose around the holidays in that timeframe? So we're already aware of some of those things. We just obviously, you know, talk about them openly because they're not in front of you on the Board agenda, but we have a good handle on that. But I also know that we've talked about it before, that COVID does impact, I think has a similar impact this year as it had last year. We are seeing people move a little bit more than we did last year, but we are paying attention to that as well.
So it's two weeks until the next Board meeting, so, I mean, is it worth thinking about having a special Board meeting in order to get the contracts out earlier?
We have to, yeah, we have to wait 10 days for them to ratify those.
But that's 10 days after the next Board meeting?
No. 10 days since the TA, the tentative agreement.
Okay. So that's not delaying getting the contracts out?
It was just really the timing of starting the negotiation process that delayed that part.
Is there any areas, I know, like you said, you've been doing this since December, but do you feel there's any areas that you may be lower as far as hiring or concerned that you may not have enough of? I mean, I know special needs always might be one area, any other area you might be concerned of.
Yeah. The interesting thing about it is that because of what we're looking at for next year, we're actually doing pretty good. Now, if 50 teachers leave all of a sudden, which I'm not expecting to happen, I may be a little concerned, but right now, if you look at our numbers and some of the things that we're doing from the matrix on a staffing standpoint, we're actually a little bit high with our teachers. We want that because as we go into next year, that may be your strategy that we use to really focus on the learning loss and how we can support teachers in the classroom. But that's just something that we're paying attention to. But as far as a key area, it's always going to be special ed. It's just a tough area to really staff and staff appropriately, but I'm going to talk about that in my update as well, as far as not only some of the things we're doing for special ed teachers, but also some of the things we're doing for our parent educators as well, because I believe that was Asher's question the last time in regards to it.
I want to ask another question in regards to virtual. I know that many parents and families receive the message about signing up their student for virtual. How does that look as far as hiring, anything where pull, any teacher being pulled from that area or?
Right now, we have about, we have about 22 applications so far, and that is without the connected call that a notary in our office is going to send out within the next couple of days. That should show us a little bit more about what we may see. And that was just for elementary, right? Oh, it's for all? Okay, so it's 22 applications over the, over the course of the entire district and 13 families. Okay. So we're still, you know, we're still going to look into that. We, we have some, we have some room. We have some room just based on the changes that we made due to COVID and wanting to keep our numbers low. I think you've seen across the state some issues where districts have been going back to in-person and really haven't navigated that well, but I feel like we had a really good plan, a comprehensive plan, and so we're kind of ahead of the game when it comes to that. And we have some additional staff from that that we can then transition into some of those positions. The last thing, I need to ask you a question, math at the high school level, that's been a constant consideration and concern. There's just not enough math teachers, and I, we have to figure out what we're going to do about that, and we'll work with you and I and our other partnering institutions to look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So is our staffing assumption that we will be the same number of students as this year, or are we staffing for a bit of an increase?
Yeah, that's, that's the tricky part. You know, we haven't, we didn't decrease our staff even though we had fewer students, and so we're just, we're making the assumption that we're going to go back up to a plateaued number from, from the year prior, so it's a guess at this point in time. So we'll, we'll adjust as we, as we go. Once we go through online registration in July, August, we should have a better feel for who's coming back, so.
But that's too late to staff.
Well, yes, yes and no. I mean, we have, we have resignations, we have, yeah, I mean, it's always a guess every single year.
It's, you know, Lyle, it's, your concern is part of like my sweaty armpit concern on a regular basis around just that, I guess I shouldn't have said that. But just the, just like, how do you play the game? Because it is, in a sense, a little bit of a game. Do I, do I not hire this position back and then come to find out we're short, you know, teachers because I made that decision? It's, it's really tough. That's why we have allowed for many of our buildings, just because we're going through staffing right now, to start to post at least the positions that we know we need for next year for sure. And then we're still having conversations with them about, okay, this is a little extra. Obviously, you're saying that you need this particular need based on numbers, but do we need it right now? Can we still make some decisions later on? The last thing I would also say in regards to what do we plan or what have we done? We have posted positions, and so you'll see a generic K-5 position open. We've had that open for the last two months. That was because we wanted applicants that we were looking at from fairs, but also general applicants to apply from that. We vet that process and look for applicants from there. So we feel really good right now, but I think your, your concern is a concern that I lose sleep over as far as how do we figure that on a yearly basis.
Because if we don't commit at this point, they're going to go somewhere else. So, but I would think we would anticipate it'd be a fairly decent probability that elementary is going to increase.
Correct.
So we maybe should hedge.
Again, we didn't decrease staff based on the decreased enrollment, so we still have about the same number of staff with, to plan for the, the greater enrollment that we have had in previous years. And so we will be looking at that. The other thing, the other thing that we're working on is our ESAR funding because we may be able to, to use people in a little different way, and so I don't think we're going to be overstaffed, given, you know, the fact that we think our enrollment is going to rebound a bit. But if it's, you know, there will also be a call for us to use our staff in very unique ways going forward, so I don't think we're going to be overstaffed.
What I think I'm hearing is where the plan is to replace one-for-one, all those that have resigned or retired or?
That's correct.
Or quit, is that right?
Yeah.
I have two quick ones that, I'll wait for all the others when you're here later.
Yeah, for sure.
Are we worried at all then about open enrollment possibility, taking kids? Like, when will we know?
Okay. Yeah, we don't know. So, you know, right now, we're proceeding as if, you know, open enrollment is, is like it is, and so we will, you know, we, we are really good about responding when, I mean, sometimes we come to school or go, come to work thinking we're going to do one job and something happens, and so it's certainly on our radar, Stacy. It's a good question. It's, it's just one I don't really have an answer for yet.
I just didn't know, like, what the timeline would look like.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It's just, yeah.
Because our starting wage is, I think, highest in the area now, or will be, you know, that's a big advantage, and hope we can land our best fits.
Absolutely.
But if we wait too long, then we kind of defeat that whole advantage.
No, we're not. And that's what, you know, we're not, we're replacing one to run right now. You'll see over the course of this week, a number of positions now posted. As we kind of have finalized the tentative agreement piece, we know a little bit where we stand, and we've had those, we had those staffing conversations.
My only other one, it's probably dumb and everyone else probably knows it, but what's, how do you determine if someone resigns or quits? I mean, or retires? Like, is it the timeframe they put in? How long?
They state it. They state it, because there's certain things that we need to notify them about if they are retiring, and certain things that are benefits that they have in regards to that, but they state that. It's in the, it's in the question, you know, whether or not you're resigning or retiring, and they let us know.
So there's like, just, there's no minimum time you have to work in order to resign versus retire?
No, except if you, kind of go back to Lyle's question around, when we send out contracts on April 27th, that starts to clock 21 days from that date.
Okay.
We do need to know if you're going to resign. If not, then you have the tricky kind of back and forth of whether or not we're going to, well, we're ultimately going to honor your contract for the upcoming year, but you know from some of the, you know, commentary emails that you've received, that does become tough because some people do find out, you know, on June 3rd, that they need to move to a different state, and we try to navigate those situations as best as we can.
So that's when you, when you look, a lot of times, it'll, it'll just say, like, when they're quitting will be a time, like, if they're quitting, okay.
Correct. Usually you'll say, usually here in the end, end of the school year, and so?
Right.
That varies as far as what that looks like for many of our teachers resigning, but it should say, you'll see on the, you'll see on the Board agenda when it's clearly delineated as a retirement as compared to a resignation.
Right, right. Okay. Yep, I was just trying to get it straight.
No, it's all good. It's all good. Cool.
Thank you. All right, then, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Lyle, if you wouldn't mind, I need to leave early this evening, and I would like to ask if we would be willing to move up item H, which is the budget certification, so that I can hear the presentation on that, and then we'll come back to these items on the consent agenda. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with the rest of the Board? I appreciate you all humoring me. Thank you. And Pam, will you make note of this, that I have amended the agenda to move item H up for just a minute? So, okay, great. Then we will move to item H, and this is the certification of our budget, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education certify and adopt the 2021, 2022 budget with maximum expenditures of $214,762,849 and property tax levy rate of $14.20694 as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Stacy. And with that, I can bring Michael Coughlin forward. These have been published. You all have, Michael sent a few items out today for you to look at, the property tax, just some of our UEN districts, and some of that is also at your table.
Thank you for that information today, though. That was very helpful, Michael.
Yes.
Yeah, those are a little bit difficult to totally decipher because anyone that has income SIR tax rate, that's going to relate to, if they didn't have it, their property tax rate is definitely higher, but everyone is different based on their valuation per pupil. You can't just say 1% is worth 50 cents on the rate or whatever. Every one of them would be individually. But it was interesting that several of them kept their property tax rate pretty flat and added to the income SIR tax, so. Few adjustments. But as the amounts and the property tax rate was read in the motion, there's a couple of significant components to that. The amount of dollars in the maximum budget did go up significantly by about $14 million, but that is primarily for two reasons. One is just the COVID, ESAR, CARES, whatever title you want to give the federal grant money that is coming in this year and next year and the year after. So that was relatively about half of that increase, and the other half was just because of construction projects that are planned at Central and WCC and the timing of that to be able to envelop the probable expenditures on those two projects. So as far as normal operational, that isn't changing a lot. It's just because of those two significant areas that is showing that we have to raise our expenditure limit to be able to capture those activities, the additional revenue and the construction projects.
Questions for Michael. I also want to make sure that Andrew gets a copy of this exhibit, this property tax, did you, great, awesome, you have it. Never mind.
Okay, and those, just to give the disclaimer, those are the amounts that were published.
Yes.
And it would be, it would be determined by every Board of Education in those districts of, is that what they're going to finalize?
They could be dropped, but they can't be raised.
Correct. This would be the highest.
Yeah, this would be the highest they could be.
Yep.
Okay. Sue?
And there was a couple on there, Council Bluff, Sioux City, and one other that escapes me right now out of the UEN that had not reported today.
As of today.
As of today.
Yeah.
College, yeah.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, from the Finance Committee, Lyle and Shanley and I, I just think it's good to note that we have kept the property tax levy flat from 19, 20, 20, 21, 21, now 22. So I think that's pretty commendable. I mean, obviously, we've gotten some ESAR dollars that have helped the cause with our COVID fights and battles, but I just think that we are being very conscientious and frugal to the taxpayer dollars that are being given to the districts, so.
And dropped the rate many times.
Right, yeah. So.
I agree, Sue, and I'm glad you, I'm very grateful you did that because with assessments being changed, you know, you don't want to double impact people, so it's great. I think, you know, anyway, good for everybody.
And we need to, I mean, we need to keep it rate low as we have been for the last 10 years, but we need to, for a couple of reasons, one of which is we need to encourage investment to increase our valuation. I did look up those numbers, and except for Tumwah and Marshalltown, our evaluation per student is, is very low. We're, we're at 71% of the state average on valuation. So if we're 100%, Cedar Falls has a little lower millage rate, but their valuation is 154% of ours. So their total dollars collected per student from local tax is 5,500, ours is 3,600. The only school in the, on the whole list that collects less in local property tax than we do is Atumwah. So we really need to do everything possible to get our valuation up, and I think, you know, the Career Center is a good start in terms of teaching the skill trades and the technology, and particularly under the umbrella of entrepreneurial skills, but I think we maybe need to double down on that and go maybe a step further and make sure the finance courses includes how to establish a business plan, and then even beyond that, access to capital becomes, you know, so I don't know if we can create some sort of partnership to have local venture capital, but, you know, we're not going to increase our valuation with, you know, $15 an hour jobs, we're not. We need entrepreneurs that start businesses, and I don't care whether they sell it on Etsy or where, there's all kinds of opportunity out there, but we really need to change our culture to an entrepreneurial culture, and I think the Career Center is a good way to do that, and this isn't a short-term thing, but unless we get our valuation up, we're always going to be fighting this thing, you know, and the state formula does, does compensate for that somewhat, but still.
How many years did you go back for that, Lyle? Because I think that has historically been, you know?
It has. It has.
I mean, even from the booming days of John Deere in the 80s, I think it has still...
It has, but we simply need to, need to grow.
No, yeah, I agree, but.
We're at $257,000 valuation per student. Cedar Falls is 394. Iowa City's 442. You know, there's just, we're just, we're just not where we need to be. And so, so anyway, I think the best thing we can do is grow our own entrepreneurs and, you know, instead of the $1,500, $15 an hour job, we need $200,000 entrepreneurial income, and that's not out of reach, I don't think, if we, but, so we, we need to, I think, just focus on that, which we already have started, have a good start at the Career Center, but then the access to capital is probably the portion that we haven't yet, yet addressed, but.
Well, we have new programs coming each year in the fall, so.
Yeah. So they're all directionally correct, I think.
Is there anything else for Michael?
I just was wondering, is, is it becoming more popular or common in districts to add the SIR, the SIR tax?
Income SIR tax.
I mean, it seems like this is, you know, I mean, the number of the UENs basically that, but, I mean, in small towns and stuff, is that being more thought of for dollars?
Well, it has gone through cycles. When this started 20-some years ago in a little district, we used it for a different purpose, but it'll be interesting to see when the whole state reports on this and what's happening with it and to see what the trends are. There is obviously some very different points of view as this federal money flows through for a couple of years, and the pandemic effect, and people have different perspective on that, and rather than, they want to fix it all at once, or whether they want to put it, stretch it out a little bit, so we'll see what happens with that.
I did convert the, the income SIR tax, and even though we're slightly below Ames and Atumwah, as you see on this sheet, Atumwah's actually 1501 if you, if you incorporate the 3%, and Ames is 1508. So we're significantly in that lower tier after you consider the income SIR tax.
Good job to administration for being fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Michael. Always appreciate it.
Pretty efficient operation if you really, if you really look at it.
All right. Now that Andrew has his supplemental information, we're, all of those in favor then of approving the certifying, sorry, the 2021, 2022 budget and the property tax levy rate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Then let's take us back to Exhibit E, which is the AEA food purchasing. Lyle, do you want to read that or do you want me to?
Sure. I move the Board of Education approve the contract between Waterloo Schools, excuse me, and the Area Education Agency for food purchasing during the 21, 22 school year.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. And discussion.
Yeah, my question here was, was just kind of a general question. Are we, do we still determine the menu, or are we kind of locked into whatever's prescribed by? by the AEA? And, you know, it just seems like we ought to be looking at the waste and the, and the amount of food that, that doesn't get eaten. I know we have some limitations on that, but I just want to make sure we have the flexibility to purchase items outside that agreement in the event that we think it's, it's better. So I don't know, who determines the menu? Do we determine the menu and just price it from the AEA for those items we like?
Yeah, we determine the menu, we determine the menu, but there are very stringent guidelines on, all the way down to sodium and exactly what, what you can, what you can offer. And so I think they go after, they make their menu and they decide what they need. And anything that AEA has on their purchasing agreement, we go after that first through them because it's a cheaper rate. And then we have Martin Brothers, and we use all kinds of vendors to, to supply our foods. Sorry, Kingsley.
And food, and food core, and, because I just had a question about this with Marty.
I mean, you're going to see a variety of semis pulling in with food, but this one, we just go after anything that they have available through AEA purchasing, we purchase through them because it's a cheaper rate that we want.
Are they the only, are they the only purchaser that we can use?
This is just one, it's a, it's a co-op. And so they, and they actually, AEA facilitates quite a few different co-ops. The food is only, food program is only one, they do a cleaning supply co-op, they do furniture co-ops. And so they, they provide those as a service through the, because you can put in your order to them and they're going to order quantity, and so you can get a better rate. So there are actually lots of purchasing agreements that, that the AEA does.
So how long have we've had, have been with them as a service, AEA, of purchasing our food?
I think we've used them for decades. It's been a long time. Ever since they decided to offer that service, we have tagged in and it might even be, you know, printing agreements or what, I mean, there's a variety of things. And you don't have to use them if we can get a better, you know, product and a, at a cheaper rate, you don't have to. But we use them whenever possible because there's just savings en masse, in purchasing en masse.
Only reason I'm asking is because people don't really know the background, like students complain about the food. Who chooses the menu? Like, I think that's a great question that you asked, but also, like, you know, who decides, like, who, what, what we get and, you know, who the purchase would be, so that's why I'm just asking you.
And maybe you heard her say, we do use Martin Brothers. And, and I know we just, we're working with some Food Corps people and trying to do fresh vegetables and do all that. Jesse, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how we, how we handle what changes our menu as we get more people from, or diversity increases, or community members from other places that may have food restrictions or...
Organic or vegetarian.
I think, I think that's a really great question that we're going to have to find out. I actually don't know how they, how they choose what's on the menu. You know what your kids say at home, I like this, I don't like this, but I don't actually know.
It's been a real, it's been a real learning experience. I mean, for, like, I, I, you know, speaking for, like, you know, with people that make teen meals or wherever, you know, it's like, you know, okay, we had, you know, we always knew about peanut allergy, but now you got limitations on pork and other products that we had to take, we had to be conscious of, you know, and.
Well, and there's not always a vegetarian option, especially this year. And we went no meat for all of Lent, and my daughter has several vegetarian friends. And the child, she'll eat like her, like some french fries and her milk, you know? So it is a good idea, I think, to.
Yeah, there's salads.
Well, when you go through the walkthrough though now, you, you just get what they give you, you know, it's different at West anyway. Have you been through, have you seen how they do the lunch line?
They don't do them.
You just kind of get what you get, so.
But there is always the option of bringing your own lunch. I mean, yeah.
Not everyone can afford to, though.
Right, right. But if you can afford it, yeah, if you have limitations, I, I, I would use that option.
Well, two things. One, Jesse, I can come back with just more information about that. I mean, it's definitely something that's a consideration. I mean, we think about as far as how we label food, just to make sure that our kids are aware of what they are eating, especially if they have any, like, religious or other kind of cultural expectations or needs for our students. But as far as how much we have thought about that in regards to how we purchase en masse, that's a greater level question that I'll, I'll come back with at our next meeting, or at least send that via the weekly update. And then, you know, just to, Stacy, your question as well, you know, many of the restrictions due to COVID has, has impacted those choices for students. Right, and so we'll, we'll have to look at, we'll have to look at that, especially as we move into next year, you know, what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I think at, at the time, we just kind of jumped to it because we wanted to, to get to as restrictive as a process as possible, but there are some, obviously some considerations and gaps that we did miss.
I can actually, you know, like, I just think about, you know, the learning gaps if you don't, if we are learning about cultures, and sometimes the kids maybe not, may not speak up to why they're not eating or something. You don't want a kid going hungry at school because they just don't have something for them to eat because, whatever, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Kingsley, I, we, a few years ago, we had AmeriCorps people come and talk about introducing, when we talk about some of the ethnic food, but I also want to talk about just the importance of fresh fruit and vegetables. And then, you know, they would go into a classroom and cut up a kiwi, and some kids had never seen a kiwi. And I would, I, I really hope we can continue with that program too, because I think it's, and so I don't know if there's anything on that that would be.
No, I'll come back with that.
Yeah.
Can someone explain what the AEA purchasing administrative fee means?
When, when you are, when you are collaborating and, and if they are running the program and they're doing the ordering, so those are things that we would have to have a clerical to do, so if they're doing that, they're charging a fee to run that, you know? And you're saving it because they get it, you get a cheaper, the items are cheaper, but they're, you are, you are supplementing the, the ordering and the people that it takes to do that. So that's what an administrative fee is. So that's a fairly common thing. Sometimes we haggle over the percent that people charge on that, but that's a, you know, unfortunately, that's a fairly common practice.
No, that makes sense. It's just then it talked about a year-end food rebate as well. So I was just trying to figure out, is that, or do they rebate part of the administration fee, is that what they're talking about?
I don't know.
I think it's if you don't.
If we don't use our whole purchase agreement.
And how much you use.
Because we contract for a certain amount. And if, if for some reason we chose to not spend at all, they would refund.
It's kind of like a Sam's Club membership. You pay that, that fee, so you can go in and buy things in bulk cheaper, that type of thing, and then they give you a rebate based on what you spent all year back at Sam's Club. This is kind of the same thing, except they give back if we don't spend enough.
Thank you, Sue, that actually makes sense, right then. Thank you.
I would assume we may have got some back last year because we weren't in school a few years.
Right, yeah, I'm sure we did. Right. Thank you, and we'll look for some more info on that at some point, so. All right. All right, then all those in favor of approving the purchasing agreement with the AEA, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Item F, and this is the Communities and Schools Memo of Understanding. And I about did it, Lyle, go ahead.
I move the Board of Education approve the Communities and Schools of Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year at a cost of approximately, I think that's supposed to be forty thousand dollars.
There's a comma, yes, not a period.
To work with students at Carver and Central, Carver Academy and Central Middle School.
So move.
Second. Thanks, guys. And discussion.
So my question here is, what's, what's the actual communities and schools add here? Looks like they're, it's just.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Marla Paget and our great principal, Ross Bauer at Central Middle, to come up and talk about this, because we actually have those people in our buildings and they're doing some great stuff.
Okay, so go ahead, Lyle.
Well, it's, it's a liaison, it's a, it's a volunteer coordinator that we're, I believe, reimbursing them for. I don't think that's our employee, I think it's theirs.
It is their employee.
But then when you read, ensure individuals work one-on-one, schools, develop a school support plan, is that different than our school improvement plan? Provide assistance with appropriate data and a district charter's program evaluation. What are we really evaluating? I'm, I'm just, this one person is kind of a coordinator, but isn't that an overlap of everything we, we normally coordinate anyway?
No, they add supplemental to what we already want to get done and add some extra assistance. So if our school, we, we make sure that what they're doing with our kids matches our school improvement plan and the process we want to go through. So we can go to them if we have kids that are academically, need help in Tier Two or Tier Three, whether it's, well, academic and behaviorally, we can reach out to this person who could provide additional resources. And the twenty thousand is what we pay to have them in our building, it's not the total cost of their employment, that's paid by their organization. And Ross could tell you more specifically the kind of things they do to help students out.
Yeah, so like, our site coordinator at Central is Ms. Dina Plum, and she carries a roster of usually sixty to seventy students that's identified over the course of the year. And as Ms. Paget said, we're talking about academics, behavior, attendance. She'll set a goal with each student and then work, work a system, work a goal, work a plan, rather, to meet that goal. And then in addition to that, beyond just that roster of students, like to look at our strategic plan, she helps support our community goal at Central. She helps coordinate events and bring family members into the building to strengthen that relationship. So it is a little bit of individualized support for those sixty or seventy students, but then further she helps support the building in helping get it connected with the community better, with our families in particular.
And that includes sometimes mentorships to help kids become more involved in the community themselves, so they understand better what it means to be a part of a community. And then even get them connected with ideas and careers they could be interested in that feeds into our WCC and those kind of programming items.
I wanted to thank Marla for taking time today to explain a lot of this to me. And so I would just like to ask Principal Bauer, what, what have you seen the fruition from some of these initiatives?
Yeah, so I have to say, the program is only as good as the people who are in the positions within the program, and we're fortunate that Ms. Dina Plum does a really nice job with communities and school in our building. And I have to say that because when she's working with that roster in particular, she has really good relationships with the students and family she works with. And one of the things I do when I'm working with a student, whether it's something behavioral or academic, I'll ask them, who are your two or three go-to people in this building? And almost every time, if a student is on her roster, they will list her. Sometimes students will list her even if they're not on her roster. And, and that speaks volumes to me about, we need people in our schools who students feel comfortable going to, who they want to go to for help. So that's an anecdotal thing. But then as far as data goes, she does keep data on the students that, who are on her rosters and the goals that they've set and the progress they're making toward those. And I mean, I don't want to downplay this, nobody bats a thousand, but she's a support system in addition to everything else we're doing in the building. She provides support rather that, that has absolutely shown a benefit.
So if you go down the list here, it says a one-on-one relationship with a caring adult. So does this person recruit a caring adult or how does that, what's their role?
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's the, the mentor themselves, the, the person that's in the building. Or sometimes if they get to know a kid well enough, and they do because they're very good at relationships, it might be somebody else in the building where they know this child has an interest that they could connect them with. But sometimes kids won't do that for themselves, so they will advocate for the child.
Okay, I don't want to go through all of them, but a safe place to learn and grow. Don't we have that anyway?
We do, and sometimes those are selling points that, things that people put out. But I will say this, the more intense and good the relationship is, the safer and better a child will do in school. And so for some of our kids coming to school, is there safety net? And then having that person that they can connect with makes that even better.
And Lyle, I don't know if this will help too, but this is not the only, what I would consider supplemental program that we engage to serve our kids. This just happens to be one that we use with Carver, but I just was making a list, you know, in addition to our school counselors and our staff, we use, you know, we use Black Heart Grundy Mental Health, we use public health, we use UNI psychology interns. We, we host the school counseling practicum students. We just applied and got the CCTC grant, which is the career counseling and transitional, career, career in college transitional counseling. We use Unity Point staff, we have, we have some mental health counselors that come out of that, we use IJAG. And a lot of these bullet points would be the same. So I, I guess if that helps you give context, this is not the only supplemental program that we use to serve our kids. And, and so there are a lot of options out there, some exist in Waterloo schools, some, some do not. There might be something you might found at a different district where there's a supplemental program, but we're just, we're trying to use every, you know, if there's a grant out there that will, will help us get more staff to serve our kids, the, the trick is to always making sure that they are aligned to Waterloo schools. And so I think they, we were just trying to show you some of what the CIS, the Communities and Schools Mid-American, what they are, is it Mid-American, what is it?
Mid-America.
Yeah, they're, what they're, what they're trying to do is to support, and I think all five of those would be aligned perfectly to Waterloo schools. We do want it to be a safe place for them to learn and grow. That is not to be misconstrued as we don't have that unless they're here. If that, I don't know if that helps give you context, but this is really part of a much broader supplemental recipe.
As long as it fits well into the existing program and isn't an overlap or, or in conflict with anything we're doing anyway, but then if it's really successful, then begs the question, why don't we do it in more schools?
Well, I think, I, I'm trying to remember, this is one we added at Central, we had it Carver for a while, right? And then we added Central recently, in recent years.
Yes. And, and so as we work through this and the data they bring out, and we also have to look at what some of the other schools have and what their needs are, Lyle, before we decide that we're going to put a particular thing in a school. Sometimes it's a good fit for a school, sometimes it's not, based on other initiatives they may have going.
More is better.
And I, I really liked, when I talked to Marla, she explained their model and how it, it lines up with Waterloo schools, so I don't see how it couldn't fit.
What is the process of getting, I mean, I know you just kind of explained it, but is it the building principal or, or the district seeing a need? How do you determine, numbers-wise, if that program, depending on if, just say Hoover has three or four programs similar to this in their building?
Okay, so for this particular one, as we have moved forward, we, we have to decide, is this a good fit? Does it match? Is it what's working there now, what other things are in place? It doesn't mean we won't ever add to our other buildings, it's just that we haven't yet. And then communities and schools themselves have to have the capacity as well.
How long has communities and schools been a part of Waterloo Community Schools?
Oh, it was when Coral was here, I think ten years.
And did, did both schools, did the agreement for both schools come at the same time?
No.
No.
We had Carver first, and then Central came on about four years ago, I think, three or four years ago.
This is my fourth year, and I believe they were the year before me, so I want to say five.
Boy, time flies.
So a five-year, roughly a five-year difference.
Yep.
From Carver to, okay, thank you.
So since this, are in two of our middle schools, what does the third one have that's comparable?
Okay, so.
Bunker, yes, Bunker.
So Bunker is right now trying to.
And Hoover.
Bunker is right now trying to go through an intensive process to be a leader in me school, so trying to, that's so intensive that trying to put this particular program in the works at the same time, it's asking too much. So once they get through a process, we'll look at their data and say, okay, this is what you may or may not need, communities and schools, if they would be interested in moving forward with it, those kind of things. And Hoover is currently doing leader in me, and they're looking at some other possibilities about things that they can do for students, but they're right now not ready for this and their data doesn't show that they need it. I, I know, but specific data.
Well, and again, think of it as a, think of it as a recipe. So, I mean, we could say every building, I, you, we don't treat every single building the same, we do have certain nuances. We try to have a consistent approach to how we serve kids, but there are different nuances. And this, communities and schools, we are not the only ones who are funding this, this program. So, you know, I think both times it was communities and schools who came to us and said, we have money to expand a program, let's look at your data at this point in time, we're ready to go, and then we sustain it for a while. So if there's a partnership and they come, and communities and schools says, hey, we're ready to, to expand to another program, then we will look at the data at that time. It doesn't mean that the other middle schools don't have that need, but both times when they came to us, we did. But both times when they came to us, we did a data review. We looked at the data at that point in time. It was Carver that we said, hey, we're ready for to move forward with this. And so that's kind of how that came to be. I remember, I was here when they were ready to expand. They came to us and they said, we have funding to do another program. Do you have funding to meet us with the other portion of the of the money? And so at that point in time, we sat down, we looked at the money, we looked at the the situation. We looked at all the data at that time and we were ready to expand. And it happened to be Central that we expanded to. But we knew that when we brought it in, we wanted to sustain it for a while. And so instead of saying, well, this year it's you and next year it's that. So um will there be a time when we would expand this to a third school, a a fourth school? Yeah, for sure. I hope that gives you a little bit of background on how that came to be. So at that time, we we did expand and it was based on the data at that point in time. With the plan that we would leave it there, sustain it for a while until we either didn't need that or the data said, hey, or we lose our funding or we're ready to expand.
Yeah, and or.
That's helpful.
And or communities and schools has the funding to move forward as well.
That's helpful. I guess I should have clarified it a little better, was it our push or their push? So that was helpful.
They, both times they had funding on their end and they were ready to expand. It's a similar thing to I J A G. Sometimes I J A G will have a funding on their end and we we are a portion of that funding. So they both, I think both times they came to us and said, well, actually three times, because they we've expanded three times on that. We had it once, we have three programs. Um they came to us and said, hey, we think we're ready to expand. Let's take a look at where you are. Are you are you ready to expand? And so um it's not completely a similar from that. Good questions.
And what specific data do they look at?
Well, they look at um socio-econ- socioeconomic rates, so free and reduced. They look at academics and gap data with us. Um they they look at behavioral data. So there's quite a few different things that we have to agree to as well to say, yeah, it's time for us to move forward also. But they do try to match up with the schools that have the highest needs.
And I know they were using, at the time when we brought both of those programs in, they were using Success Link, which is Brad McCullough. And I know that they went to him and said, take a look at your data. What do you, where where would you see the recommendation? And that includes additional pieces of data that are not actually non-school related. So there were referrals to um mental health counselors outside of Waterloo Waterloo schools.
Access to medicine.
Yeah, they um numbers of parents who had accessed certain resources. And so there was a quite a, I I'd have to look to see exactly. But I do know that it started with Success Link, which, you know, we we do feed our data into Success Link. But Success Link is is really a community-wide database, so.
Any more questions, guys, for?
Um just out of curiosity, how much do does their program pay then?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay.
I I really don't know how much it costs them to employ each of the in each individual person. I know it's quite a bit more than the twenty thousand per person.
Yeah, we pay the twenty thousand toward that salary, but I believe, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to go back to each person, see what their salary is and what their. You know, let's say that they're a, you know, if each person is fifty thousand, then they're paying the other thirty for each person. So we, ours is a flat fee. We pay to, yeah, if that helps. So we we pay that flat fee.
I'd have to actually ask one of them what they make, and I haven't done that.
We don't hold their contracts, and so I don't know what they make. I just know that they charge us twenty thousand dollars per person.
Are they full-time?
Yes.
Any more questions for either Ross or Marla? We good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. So I'll um I'll ask for all in favor of I M F Communities and Schools of the M A M understanding. All that in favor?
Aye.
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 All that are opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. That brings us to item G.
I move the Board of Education approve the twenty thou- twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two memorandum of agreement between Waterloo Schools and Junior Achievement of Eastern Iowa. Incorporated at a cost of nine ninety-three per participating student.
Can I have a, so move in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Lyle?
So this fits, as it states here, pretty perfectly. It's work readiness, entrepreneurship, and financial literacy. It's just just what I talked about earlier. But uh there is an increase of thirteen percent in uh per student cost. That seems a little high. Uh and then nine ninety-three for participating student. I'm guessing this applies to all elementary and middle school students and most, if not all, high school students. So it's a ten hundred thousand dollar uh commitment. Is that what we're talking about?
Stephanie?
Yeah, we could, we're going to tag team this. So um that, no. So junior achievement, the the costing structure is really quite unique. They charge us that much per student, but only for certain grades. So right now, I believe we are paying the per pupil cost for fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, correct? And I think they are covering the cost for K one, two, three, four, and all high schools. So they raise funds for that. So it's it's, I I don't know if you guys are going to remember, we talked about this last year. Because the question that you asked me, which actually made complete sense to me, why don't we just pay like three dollars for every student we have? Instead of we pay the full amount for certain kids. And I actually don't know the answer to that. We've, because we've always done it this way? I don't know. That's a terrible answer. So we we do pay that, but we pay per grade level. So we cover certain grade levels and they fundraise for the remaining kids.
Yeah.
It's it's a very unique, it's it's just different. It's just a, yeah, we, do you remember that? We talked about that. Somebody said, why don't we just pay a certain amount for every kid who does it? And I'm like, yeah, that would be one way to do it, so.
Do the grades change?
I think we've been at, we've paid for five through eight. Pam, do you remember that? Haven't we paid for five through eight since, for fifteen years? I I don't, it's been a long time that they've only charged us for grades five, five, six, seven, and eight.
How much are we getting, how much are we actually doing in high school? What's the program?
Uh Steph, do you know that quite a bit? The 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 programming at the high school is really solid. And I know we're using one program at the Career Center on full scale.
I would say grades nine and ten is where we use it the most. And in the past recent years, especially for grade seven, when it comes to that financial literacy piece. Because our seventh grade Common Core for Social Studies changed so much to include that financial literacy piece. So our J A supported that greatly, that changeover um to the curriculum. I just, I remember seventh grade was was a big one that had to make a a great change to include that financial literacy piece. So it was a good match.
When are they in the high schools? Like what what classes are they going into?
If I remember correctly, they are sometimes going into, when I think of ninth grade, into the C three classes. And at times the social studies classes as well. Now, that could differ depending on the building and depending on the time and, you know, things like that. And the volunteer, because of course, these are all volunteers as well.
And I think we are using one of the um the pieces of curriculum at the, I I want to say it's J A Economics. Is that, am I right on that? That's the one that we're using at the Career Center, and we have our staff using their curriculum. So we are the ones who are teaching it, but we're using their curriculum. So we're getting all their materials and they're delivering it to us, but we use our staff. So they trained our staff, and so we're using it as part of our entrepreneurship, pro entrepreneurial classes.
Cause I I your question stays kind of mine. I can't never remember ever being asked to volunteer for J A in high school. I remember doing it for elementary and under grades, but I, high school kind of was kind of loose to me. Like, I don't hear much about people going in on that.
And I haven't heard my kids say they did it in high school.
Same here, I, yeah.
My husband did in a ninth grade class.
In the exhibit, in the exhibit, in two, it says it, um you have a list by school grade. Do you have that for this, for this year, for this past year, for twenty twenty-one?
I do not.
We, we can, I can get that for you. They keep amazing records, so I can.
That'll answer your question.
Absolutely. We can send that to you if you want. Yep.
But we would have, if we are touching that, interesting, if we are touching that in our C three classes. Now we're offering more C three online and also in the middle schools. Are we touching those students quite as much? Because they would not be getting it in high school.
That's a good question. I will, I will say that I do know that we are touching a lot of our, um a great deal of our middle school kids with uh with Junior Achievement. Our six, seven, and eight, I will say, our six, seven, and eight overall.
But if we're teaching different content in C three at a high school level and we're not catching those kids that are.
You're exactly correct.
Yeah.
Yep, that might be.
Unless they have tape presentations that they play.
And I don't think.
And again, we might be using the content, but not the deliverer at the C three virtual, so um.
J A has been very flexible with us in in actually giving us the content and the curriculum that they write to go with these. And have our teachers teach those, teach that curriculum, which has been really good.
What is our, I mean, I can't, I wouldn't want to guess, what's our number of kids taking C three in middle school now? Any idea?
I can't, I can tell you that almost every eighth grader at Bunker um is enrolled in C three. Hoover, Central, and Carver, pro, I would loose guess as fifty percent of our our kids. A lot of our, that is a way that we're really pushing our eighth graders to get a high school credit before they go to high school. So C three is a more low-risk class where they can, that they can take and have that support to pass that class and get a, earn a high school credit.
Well, and if they're not doing it, they're doing it the summer before too a lot.
They can, yep. Yep, that's an option.
Interesting, interesting side stat, how many, how many kids we have going into high school for a high school credit for, before uh?
Cause that that is one of our goals um as a middle school team, is that every student, especially our targeted populations. Leaves ha- leaves middle school with at least one high school credit, if not more, if we're able to do that, but at least one high school credit. And that's our students with I E Ps. That's our students that receive E L L support. Those are the kids that we're really targeting. But we really would like every student that is in eighth grade.
Get them ahead already.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can we make sure we're getting that communication out to parents as well before their eighth grade year?
Yeah.
They do.
About that option? Who said we do?
I said that. Do they not?
I didn't get the information before. My son's eighth grade. That's why I mentioned it.
I got it.
I thought we did, but you can always over-communicate, so I'm okay with that.
So my other tenth grader, and he had the opportunity to take C three five, and he didn't. So he had to take it his freshman year, so. So it doesn't hurt to over-communicate. They'll just, they'll just hang up on the.
I think, I think, I think you probably hear more, it's right. So I think if you hear word of mouth, i- if you're in the right circles. I mean, I, we hear about it, but you know, we've heard about it at Hoover, just because talked to other, oh yeah, we took that there. But if you're not hearing it from people that take it, you may not have that same.
I heard after.
Yeah.
That's not helpful.
No.
Oh, I I I know one of them didn't get it, but I don't know if they offered it yet. I don't think they offered it when one of my, two of my kids went for Hoover. I don't think they're offering it yet then, because they're on the backside here.
And I'm probably the only parent that listens to the whole connect ed call.
You might be one of the few, Esther.
I bet I am. I bet I am. I listen to the whole thing. I don't know why.
Yeah, we can go back and revisit how we.
Yep, absolutely.
Good question about Junior Achievement Virtual. Do, I don't know if you're going with this, Jessie, but do they have virtual options for like parents who are at home? And they can get on and look at what they have to offer?
And we're looking at that um more for next year. And actually, Angelie Myers and Ryan Christopher have already had a meeting with our our Junior Achievement folks.
Okay, thank you.
So about how many hours of study are each of these programs, these copyrighted programs?
Most of them are six weeks, um six weeks, one time, one time a day, so like one period. They're usually uh like a six-hour program for some of the, I I actually last year taught the the, I've taught the seventh grade one, just because I wanted to get more immersed in it. And then I did the fourth grade one, one year, and volunteered a classroom, just handpicked a classroom and and went in. And um so it's six, six lessons as part of that cycle. So I've done the fourth grade one, which is um J A R region is the fourth grade one. And then I've taught the seventh grade, which was the, I think I did the Global Marketplace was mine.
So it's one, an hour a week?
Uh one hour a week for six weeks. So it's a, it's a portion, unless you get to the high school, and then it's an actual semester course.
Can we get a breakdown of which are for what grades?
Yeah, I think the elementary is in order, so the J A R families is the kindergarten, J A R community, just in the order that they're listed. K one, two, three, four, five, six.
Do we get the ones that are listed upon request, the free ones that they do?
Ask that again, Stacy.
The ones that they have listed um on page twenty-seven at the bottom of, upon request. They have the J A R selves for kindergarten, they have financial park, or finance park, finance park, and then financial literacy.
They have been great partners in anything that we request. They have given us.
And they do like career fairs. So have we u- have we utilized these ones that are listed under the upon request?
That would be hard. I I'm not sure exactly which ones they have requested, and it definitely varies year to year.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a good volunteer. I mean, if you want, you know, when I first did it, you know, it's like, you know, I can, I can commit an hour a week, you know, for, you know, five or six weeks. I mean, that was like, you know, you're wanting to volunteer, get engaged. I mean, I think actually it was probably one of my, you know, first volunteer things I did in the school. I think I did the first grade one, I think, uh first grader kindergarten, one or two, I don't remember, but.
And I know Dr. Lindeman has, I know Tara has as well. She volunteered at Carver uh and did J A Carver as well.
So these are all taught by volunteers?
Mm-hmm.
So what does someone do, like if we have someone in the community who would like to do it, do they just, where's the contact for J A?
Call J A, call Junior Achievement of Eastern Iowa. They have their own office and they have their own number and um so, yeah, they're always looking for volunteers. And they do recruit heavily, so.
They are.
So I think you alluded to that, doesn't need to be, I mean, if you look at these high school programs in particular, you know, they got great names. Beater, Bernario, Career Success, Company Program, Exploring Economics, Personal Fin- you know. Can these be just incorporated into our existing curriculum by the existing features if we wanted to?
They are. They are at the high school level.
They're elective though, correct?
They're, yeah, it depends. Um isn't, I'm trying to think if some of those are, I'm, I'd have to go back to the grad requirements and look at. But I think some of these pieces are incorporated into some required coursework, but I'd have to go back and look at that course alignment.
So for example, I know that our our kids are all required to take economics. And I believe that one of these economics modules is incorporated into that that economics course that is a graduation requirement.
That makes more sense. That's that you you got to answer my question. So we, we're, we're not, they're not volunteers on this going, in the high school. It's all integrated.
Right.
Well, because you'd have to have someone that felt pretty versed to be able to teach that at a high school level, you know, I think.
So it seems like like maybe one of the finance courses that we're going to add to the Career Center, it should incorporate every single one of these.
It's already in the works. I can tell you it's already in the works. The um and really where that starts, I know for a fact that J A is working with Hawkeye. Because the curriculum that we're teaching is approved at Hawkeye level, because it's a concurrent course. So we don't, we, the curriculum is set. And so I know that I attended a couple meetings where I wasn't, I mean, I was just listening. That J A was meeting with Hawkeye staff and their deans, uh their dean of that department to look at the the content of any coursework. To see where J A would supplement or supplant. And so that is, that is happening. And when that becomes the course content, then this will, that will come in. So um.
But we don't need Hawkeye approval to do that.
We do, if it's a concurrent course, yes. It's a requirement of law.
We can't add?
We can add. We can add. But if it, it depends on if, what the course is. So if they are using that particular piece, then they start with what is a requirement.
Yeah.
And then we supplement on top of that. So I believe their content, if I remember right, is is usually thirty-seven hundred minutes is their requirement. And then we have, you know, we have fifty-five hundred minutes, so we we can supplement, yes.
We could add all of these to one of those courses.
If if it's the right thing to do, if it's the right thing to do, for sure.
Just seems like we ought to, as long as it exists, we ought to take a hard look at it and see.
Absolutely. And I know that Jeff has been media, has met with J A a dozen times or better to really look at that. And and especially the entrepreneurial piece of it for other programs other than our finance and marketing departments, so.
Okay.
So what is this, go ahead. I was gonna say, when it says upon a request, who do they talk to? If, so let's say you're interested in the J A Finance Park program that's never been, you know, you have it offered, but who do you talk to to even have?
It's not by parent request. It's by district request. If you're bringing it into your district as part of your curric- your kindergarten curriculum. So it's not, um it's not just, hey, this is on the shelf, just call us if you want a copy of it. It's actually a a district saying, hey, this is something that we want to, we want to bring into our fifth grade. There are districts all over the state of Iowa that don't use J A materials.
Correct.
So when you're, if you have your content, you're, you're saying, here's how we're going to teach it. We've chosen to use J A materials and J A volunteers to deliver portions of our content, so. There are districts all over that don't use that. We've just, I I would say that Waterloo Schools has doubled down on Junior Achievement over the past years. Where some maybe, um this is more history than you want to know. on junior achievement over the past years, where some maybe, um, this is more history than you wanna know, and I'm looking at the time, but um, at one point in time, financial literacy was a, you know, we, we had it in our curriculum, but it wasn't a legally required part of the Iowa Core.
Now it is.
Now it's required as part of Iowa Core, so when that happened, how many years ago, Steph, a long time?
It was.
When did Iowa Core come in, and so now the financial literacy was part of the twenty first century skills, thank you for that section, and so when fina- financial literacy became not a, hey, you should have it to a, you must teach it, then districts were saying, hey, how are we gonna meet these requirements? We already had been using J A, so we went back to their content and said, okay, where will this meet, so it was really an alignment piece at that time. Other districts said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna hire a teacher, we're gonna put it in our content, but we're gonna do something different, and we're not gonna use volunteers, we're not gonna do, uh, we're not gonna use Ju- Junior Achievement, we actually believed heavily in their materials, and
Absolutely.
um, and, and the, the, you know, the value of having um, community people support the efforts, and so I, I, again, I would say we double down on junior achievement when the financial literacy standards came forward.
Thank you.
And I'm not suggesting that we use this per se, just that, or the overarching umbrella of, we wanna produce entrepreneurs. Whatever that takes, if this can be a helpful piece, then we ought to take full advantage of it, but, but that ought to be, you know, the asset ma- every, everything involved in being an entrepreneur and, and developing a uh, a business, a local business, and adding to the tax base, we need to grow our own in terms of economic success, I think.
We think their materials are very solid.
They are.
If they weren't solid, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we're not just using them to use them, we're using them because they're good.
And I would agree, I, I remember taking it in seventh grade, so thirty five years ago, and I still remember it though, I remember that, I remember that quarter, so.
And, and there's a, there's a fun spirit to all of the lessons, I don't, Tara, you, I think you're the only one in the room who, and Jessie, we've, we've all taught it, and you know, it's a fun, I mean, the materials are really solid, and you know, you plan your lessons, and you go, and they give you everything you need, you just have to be prepared to do it, and, and you know, like working with kids. It's great.
Elementary was fun with that program.
Any more questions? Any more questions for anyone? And I guess the positive is we've had it in our curriculum for many, many years, so I guess we are supportive and are using those opportunities to take advantage of that. So, all in favor of approving item G, the Junior Achievement Memorandum of Agreement for the twenty one, twenty two school year? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, carried six zero. So, now that will bring us on to item nine, and that is the East High trip to Saint Louis, Missouri, and Memphis, Tennessee, and we will, um, I see Dr. Jo- or, Joel Smith is coming forward as the band director of East High to tell a little more, but it is, um, I'll get the motion on the table, the Board of Education approved travel for East High students and staff to Saint Louis, Missouri, and Memphis, Tennessee, for the Fine Arts Clinic from June fifth through ninth, twenty twenty two.
Summude.
Second. Second, thank you. Let you.
Yes, this is um Kyle Geese, I think this is his first experience at a board meeting. Um, he's been orchestra teacher at East High for three years now, has been an excellent partner, um, and is, um, yeah, he's just here to field any questions, we both can, um, this is, unfortunately, we got our New York trip canceled last year, so we wanted to try to get another one, at least in the works for some of those students that will still be around next year, something a little bit closer, so it's not as expensive, um, but yet give us enough time to fundraise for it, which is why we put it in June of next year, instead of spring break.
And how many students are you anticipating that might take advantage of this?
Um, if all goes well, I would say enough to, well, we had two buses, fifty five passenger buses of students and parents, so I'm hoping around seventy five, would you guess?
Yeah.
That's about right, around at least seventy five, hopefully more, um, we've already been talking, discussing it with some of the middle school kids that are coming in next year, just to kind of put the bug in their ear, and um, saying that it's in the works, so.
That's awesome, that, your itinerary looked pretty
Amazing.
Pretty amazing, yeah.
Picture right now.
Anybody wanna go?
So there's no performances?
Yes, there is, at Graceland. We'll be performing at Graceland, that's our performance opportunity.
Cool.
So, we already have kind of our picture in the works, it will be an outdoor performance, uh but, um, and our audience would be, you know, bystanders that were coming, coming in, and they'll stop, they'll obviously listen, um, but it will be outdoors, we will probably do a marching performance of some sort, it makes it easier, less equipment to haul.
Is, are all these things included in the price, including the food?
Yes, um, except for, you know, food that we get on the way there.
In, en route, but actually, the, the price is including a debit card for a certain monetary value for each of those meals, so the students will get, let's say, a sixty dollar card, so if there's six meals that we have en route while we are on the road, they will get like a sixty dollar debit, Visa debit card to use for those meals, so basically every single meal is included in the price.
Nice. Thank you.
I love it, I love it, I was so sad when the last West High one was canceled, um, and so to see, when I saw this on here, my only reaction was yay. So, really excited for you guys.
We were really excited too, when they, they informed us just recently that the Lion King off Broadway was, was going to be in Saint Louis when we were there, because that's a touch of the New York side that we didn't get to see, that we will actually still get to see, so, it's exciting for us.
I think your challenge is gonna be get all the kids back after they visit the city museum.
Yeah.
They're just gonna be all over the place, and.
I've, we've been told that it's
They're not gonna come back.
It, it's.
You won't bring them all back.
Yeah, they will be worn out, they will be worn out.
They all, all the passengers, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's all good area, Zoom, Saint Louis always good too, down there, it's very good.
And how ma- how are your um numbers for band and orchestra looking?
Go ahead.
Um, for the trip?
Well, just in general?
Uh, we're looking at an increase of ten students right now, but I'm hoping to do more recruiting and get us to the golden number of fifty next year.
Awesome.
We're, his program is split up into two sections, you know, you know, ninth and tenth, and eleventh and twelfth, to help bridge some of those skills. Um, my program has been hovering right around sis- sixty, um, the COVID and virtual uh option kind of lost, you know, I lost a few from that, but um, I'm hoping to get up to seventy five next year, I have a very large number of freshmen coming in, and I'm only graduating twelve or thirteen, so I'm hoping to have a normal marching season next year.
That'd be awesome if you did.
Yeah, West, we lost a lot, so, this school year, so, I'm, I'm hoping that everybody's hitting the middle schools really hard.
I, yes, we both have, we both have been in there, talking with them, building relationships.
Well, it sounds like an awesome trip, I wish I had. I could maybe go along, right? I might do that, but um, we thank you for coming, any more questions, anybody? Okay, so, all in favor of approving the East High trip to Saint Louis, Missouri, and Memphis, Tennessee? Vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried six zero, thank you guys both for coming, and give us updates, if you have fundraisers throughout the year too, we would, you know, appreciate knowing, cause um, come to the meeting, or get it to Pam, or.
You just had one this weekend, right, you had, had a can drive?
Yeah, I saw that.
I was just gonna say, I didn't know if anybody had seen that.
Yeah, the picture.
That was mainly for the band side, the marching band, cause we need to raise funds for that too, but we had the most, our, our top amount was forty of those bags, and recent ones that we've done in the past, that's the most we've done, we had a hundred and forty three large recycled bags full of bands.
I think people have been holding them.
And I did, and I did the math, and just with a hundred and forty three bags, that's seventeen hundred dollars, and that does not include the cardboard boxes of glass bottles that we had, that we redeemed, so.
Yeah, I think there's a picture on Facebook, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, get it out and work, I think a lot of people were holding them, because they're not, people were not, haven't been doing them.
I wanted to climb the mountain, but they said, no, don't climb the mountain, so.
Well, thank you both for coming, we appreciate it, and good luck, and, and just let us know.
And Mar- May fifteenth, we have our only live in-person concert at the amphitheater, from two to five, on a Saturday, so, we will put that out there, but.
May fifteenth at the amphitheater, is that orchestra and band?
And choir as well.
And choir, awesome.
And jazz band and.
Two o'clock, you said?
Two to five will be the whole thing, you know, we'll stagger the performances, so people can come and go.
We, we missed your, um, um, what's it called, show?
The swing show.
Swing show, I was thinking.
Will actually be May thirteenth and fourteenth.
Oh, yay.
We are gonna do that at half capacity, so that we can still have.
Awesome, so May thirteen and fourteen, awesome.
Thursday and Friday.
Okay, well, thank you both, and great dates to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to item ten, and that's the School Resource Officers Agreement with the City of Waterloo. Little background, um, it's a cooperative agreement between the Waterloo Schools and the city, it provides for the assignment of six police officers within the district, um, primary assignment is the middle school and high school level, and the alternative school expo, and resource officers providing additional services at the elementary level. The district funding for the program is through the general operating budget of the district, the total cost is two hundred ninety nine thousand and eighty one dollars, and an additional eighty seven eleven increase from the current agreement that we have now. It is due in two installments, November one of twenty twenty one, and April one of twenty twenty two. So the superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approved the School Resource Officers Agreement with the City of Waterloo at the cost of two ninety nine oh eight one, for the twenty one, twenty two school year, and we will ask Marla Paget to come forward to assist with questions. Oh, so, so, sorry.
Summude.
Second, thank you, you see I do this very minimally, okay?
You're doing fine.
Hey, Marla, when you go through it, can you talk about what we had talked about, that, that portion?
I, I absolutely can.
Thank you.
Um, some background information for you guys to know as we go into this, and these are things that came up with the Evansdale contract, and I said I would have some data for you guys, um, as we go through the Waterloo one, so, the the organization that the SROs go to for their training, uh Stacy did ask if it was accredited, it is, it's um, through the National Association of School Resource Officers. So you, you can, you can Google that out there, but that's where they send them to get their initial training. Um, based on what we talked with you guys about, boy, our ears rush together, uh, last year, I think before we closed, was making sure that that whole school year, we had some additional um professional development for our officers, and, and for our administrators, because sometimes there was confusion between what's the officer's job, and what is school management and the principal's job. So, we have done that, we have continued to work on that, we trained all, all of our officers in MAMP, which is a de-escalation technique, and the data I'm going to tell you guys, I don't know if it will surprise you or not, only five total arrests from our schools this year, which is down almost ninety percent from when we first started looking at this, five total, to this point in time. And what I will tell you, the difference is, through the training that we have offered, the training that they have been a part of, and what we have done with our administrators, we are more at a place to where we're not looking to our officers to strong arm anybody, we're looking to provide resources, school resource officers, what does this child need? The other thing that's helping us out now is Waterloo, um, the City of Waterloo has contracted with, um, I always forget the name of it, Elevate. So we have, if we have a situation at a school, and these do occur, if our officer is unable to talk through a a child that has suicide ideations, or has a mental health issue that's happening, instead of having to arrest them to contain them, because of the de-escalation conversations they've had, they've been able to hold on till we can get other people in place that can help them with whatever the mental issue is, or their suicide ideations, and get them to the, the, get them the proper help. And then to increase further, and this is at no charge to us, this summer, all of our officers are going to go, except for Officer Lippert, who's already done it, forty hours of additional training and crisis intervention training. Where um, it, it helps them to help people with mental disorders and addictions, and to be able to de-escalate and help them in a crisis situation, and we come across that in our buildings, so the more training we believe our officers can have and get, the more useful they are to us and to our kids. So that's some backup ground information, based on what you guys asked when I was here for um, the Evansdale SRO contract, and one of the things I did answer already, Stacy, that we talked about, um, but the other thing she asked about, if you look on page forty three of your agenda, the fourth whereas, she asked about the gang activity. She thought that that sounded um, like it had racist overtones to it, and, and she brought that to me, and.
Well, and that it was covered already by the other.
And, and she thought it might be covered by the other, so I did talk, I got back ahold of Waterloo P D, and I talked to them. Um, we're going to look at that language for the future, but right now, they wanted to assure us that sometimes you have to do things around gang activity and the prevention of that, that would be different, that has to be specific. So that's why that's still in there, and they also reassured me, in case anybody didn't know, um, there are gangs of every race in our city.
Yeah, I mean, I
Yep.
We discussed that.
We did.
This was more of a perception, and since, since there had, there was already language in there, crime, violence, substance abuse, that was my question, was just, was it adding a redundant negative title, but if they feel that that's something, what, what, what are they doing separately then, what's different?
So, as you know, the Waterloo Police has a, a gang task force, and there are certain things that occur that every, every officer is briefed on. So if there are known students involved in gang activity, they, they do try to connect with the student, build a right relationship, and try to get them to move away from that kind of life by offering other situations, they're also looking at adding an explorer um, opportunity for kids in Waterloo, that would be around law enforcement, to get them more familiar with what they should really be doing.
So having that in there, their, their purpose is that they're going to identify these kids?
Yes, it's specific.
And target, and provide intervention before they commit crimes, is that what we're looking at?
Well, before they get too deep in, or if they can help them get out.
Okay.
And I would assume this is probably written by the City of Waterloo's lawyer.
Yes, it is.
And, and so, he probably knows the legal, the legal ramifications that need to be included, I would assume.
Could you provide some examples of how the SROs have connected with the students since, since COVID? You know, they're coming back into school, or coming back from virtual, so, you know, we have this increase, and I know we have an agreement, we increase every year, but could you provide some idea or suggestion to what they've done since with COVID, coming back into school, the relationship being built, et cetera?
They, they have had, um, and embarked on an open door policy, trying to be in the hallways as a friendly face, kind of like the administrators do, greeting kids in the mornings, um, being visible after school, but in a friendly way, and interacting with kids, getting to better know. They wanna be a part of the team that says, this child has these concerns and these issues, and if there's something they can do to help provide, even through a mentorship, they have done that, um, they have been especially helpful, cause COVID's been a tough year for mental health issues, even for our students, they have been especially helpful in identifying better that this is not an act, a criminal act, cause the child may be out of control, but an act wherein they're having some kind of mental episode, and use their new skills to try to talk it down, so they have done that several times for us this year.
I know that I am, you know, a little critical of having SROs in the school, um, and I feel like, uh, elementary, middle school possibly, but sometimes there's this disconnect that happens in high school, um, some of the comments I have received is, there's no relationship, many of them don't like them, um, and I know we're trying to avoid that. And I know we're trying to avoid that when we get them early to establish that relationship. My concern is the door seems to get slammed by the time they get from eighth grade into ninth grade, and there's a shift that happens. Possibly because there's different SROs, because they haven't built that relationship just yet. You know, they've gotten established with maybe their elementary one or the middle school one, and they're switching to a different one. And it's based on relationship, definitely. But my concern is that a lot of high school students don't, they kind of shut their, or turn their backs against the SROs for many, many reasons, so.
I'm going to look into that for, I'm going to dig into that, India, I promise you that.
Okay.
Because that's troubling to me. And, and if you could send me some of the comments without any identification, I would certainly be appreciative. Because I do want them to know that this is what's being said. And if this is what's being said, or this is someone's perception, it becomes their reality, what can we do to guard against it?
Okay.
So, please send me some of those.
I also want to ask the question, because it seems to be an uptick with students using.
Vaping.
Thank you, vaping. So, how are we addressing that? Because a lot of parents have, have concerns, and it's middle school and high school right now.
So, I, I can tell you, well, maybe I can't. There is a place in town that's being targeted right now that actually is selling to middle school kids. They can walk right in and buy the vape pen. So, I, I do know that there's some things happening within Waterloo PD to try to shut some of those things down. And that has to become more a part of the conversation, because it is more dangerous than just actual smoking.
How, how?
But we, but we do have to look at policy, and you'll see when it comes out that we'll include vaping in that. The other scary part about vaping is, is that it's pretty easy to put a marijuana-type substance into the vape. That it's harder to identify than that that's what that is. So, we are working on it, we're aware of it. We don't have a full plan in place for how to handle it. But we are working on it. It's going to change some of our policies, that's for sure. Just like when cell phones became so prevalent, we had to go back, remember we used to have policies about beepers? That doesn't even exist now.
So, how, how are teachers handling it right now?
We've already added that to the policy, I believe.
The, the vape part of it, but more, some of the more specific things when we go down through.
Synthetic, I think it was.
Yes, when we go down through what's going to happen as far as consequences and those kind of things.
Okay, so, we're still working on it?
Yes.
And, you know, I think about all the teachers and administrators who have to deal with that. Because it is, you know, a change and a shift of culture right now, but it's pretty major.
It's, it's sometimes it's, it's tougher to identify than actual, if somebody went into a bathroom and smoked a cigarette or something else, because it's harder to detect. So, it, it makes it more undercover, but we'll figure it out.
Marla, I will go back and echo your comment, so I know you're talking about the SROs trying to build relationships. I can, at least a test, what I've seen, at least, you know, I've had my kids drop off Hoover and stuff at, at least Officer Lindman there. I know he's doing a good job. It's always usually at the door to greet the kids and kind of try to build those, you know, for them. I know COVID's kind of made things with different, more interests, but I, I've seen that, at least personally, they, you know. With that officer, he's done a good job of trying to engage children at the middle school there, so.
I'm going to pass that comment on to him. He will appreciate that.
Yep.
I was wondering, as far as, like you said, the Explorer Program, which I think would be really effective if we could get something going together, like, you know, a law enforcement careers. I know we have, but I know that field is really, really becoming less saturated as far as kids enrolling. Hawkeye numbers are down with that program and, and obviously for many reasons, you know. But just building relationships, just showing what the career potentially could be and, and the benefit to society you can be in this role. If we could get something, you know, going sort of recruitment-ish, you know, that would let kids know what that's as an occupation too.
Lieutenant Duncan and Chief Fitzgerald are working up a proposal for me. But they're not ready yet, but they're very interested, because they think that will get it at the ground level to provide some interest to try to carry it through. It's one more thing. I don't know if it will or not. It's one more thing they want to try.
Well, and I would just, I'm, I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to cut you off. For law enforcement, for police science and fire science, we don't have those pure careers, those pure programs. But what I would remind people is that if you are going into those areas, there are some medical courses that you have to take for both of those areas. We, we already offer four of those courses that are required for a fire science degree and a law, a, a police degree? Police science, sorry. So, we do work with, we counsel students that if they are interested in that, they can get those four courses done at the Career Center. That would be a requirement as they go into those areas. So, we haven't gone very far, but those would be, sometimes we'll call it a partial program. It's a four, four course. So, I just, Andrew's here, so I just thought, just in case he's going to pick it up, I would just throw that in there.
You guys, one final thing that we have added this year as an element is if they do have to arrest somebody out of the schools. I, I have asked that I be told, and then I review it as well. Because based on the training that we have offered, did it meet those standards? So, we've added that element in addition.
Do you get a report every week or every month or every year? How does it work?
I, I get a report every month. Because that also is a report that we have to use for activities because of eligibility. But if they are actually have done something in school that warrants them being arrested, I want to know that day. I, I don't want to wait for a month down the road. I want to know that day and what the circumstances were. And I work with both the officer and the administrator then.
So, is that on, on number six, under definition of terms, delinquent act? Is a delinquent act one that they do arrest someone on or, or don't?
So, they're just defining what a delinquent act is.
Right.
Now, sometimes, sometimes the delinquent act can be bad enough that there is an arrest. But sometimes a delinquent act is, I took the extra piece of whatever it is out of the lunchroom.
Right.
We're not going to have them arrested for that. We're going to see, find out why they needed that and couldn't get it, or what the purpose of taking that was.
There was just lots of fun legalese speak in those two.
Right, right.
Piggyback on your police science comment, sociology has to be a large piece of that.
Yeah, and we do offer that as well at the, at the high schools. That's not a career center path as far as one of the directly aligned, but yes, you're right. There are courses that would be, I think that's actually considered, I think sociology is considered a Gen Ed course at Hawkeye that more people take that are not specific to police science, fire science, or a specific area. I think pretty much everyone has to take sociology, I believe. If you're going to Hawkeye, it's part of their core for an AA degree. So, yes, it would be, there are other things in addition. There's also some composition classes, English and Composition or that they could take as well, that would be part of that. But as far as the ones that are specific to those, there's just those four that we're offering.
But a preliminary law class might also be real interesting. If you put those all together, it could be a real interesting curriculum, I think.
Police terminology class, like we have medical terminology or something, they could build in something maybe.
Any more questions from the board? Anything else you want to add, Marla, or?
No, thank you, but I appreciate you listening.
Okay, so, I would ask all in favor of approving item ten, the School Resource Officers Agreement with the City of Waterloo. Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried six zero, chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us up to item eleven, which is classroom interactive display purchase. And that's on page forty-nine in your agenda packet, item K. And we have Mr. Matt O'Brien, our director of, executive director of technology, coming forward, or he's here. And I'll get the recommendation on the table and let him explain it in his awesome way of understanding. The superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approved the purchase of Promethean Active Panels and stands from CDWG at a total cost of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Second?
It's a move.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. O'Brien?
Good evening. A standard tool in really most classrooms across the country is some sort of central display or some sort of interactive display. The district actually started installing these in classrooms back in the two thousand eight through two thousand nine school year. At that time, Promethean Active Boards were selected and installed across all of our district classrooms. Those active boards are now, the oldest ones in our classrooms are twelve years, going to be twelve years old this summer. They're at the end or quite honestly beyond the end of their useful life. We're having more and more difficulty supporting them and even getting them to work with the newest versions of the Windows operating system. So, that's something that we've been looking at phasing and replacements. The board actually has approved in the last several years, some replacements that we phased in at the middle school level. So, the proposal before you tonight is actually replacements for our high school classrooms, for all three high school classrooms. The proposal to continue installing active panels comes to you after we met with a focus group that we held with ten high school teachers, where we looked at four different alternatives, which are kind of the predominant alternatives that are available in our, at various schools across the state and across the country. And I know Stacy had wanted to make sure that I actually mentioned that or kind of explored those four alternatives with you all. So, I actually am going to show you one of the slides that we used with our focus group. And this is a little bit busy, but I'll take you through it real quick. I should caveat this that we, we went through quite a bit of information with our, with our teachers, with the focus group. And this was kind of the summary slide, so we went further into details. The other caveat I should put is all of the costs are actually estimated. Again, this was before we started, obviously, negotiating with vendors, because we wanted some direction from our teachers of, of what they were actually wanting and, and the features that they found desirable. So, just to take you through those options real quick, the first one is actually the recommendation before you. The Promethean Active Panel, which I think most of the board has seen those. For our public, if you haven't been in our middle school or WCC classrooms, they're essentially a huge big screen TV that's a touchscreen TV that is loaded with a bunch of software and apps, so you can use it with your computer or use it separately without your computer. It runs Android operating system, for those of you that are familiar with that from your phones. We also explored, there are other brands other than Promethean that have similar interactive displays. So, we kind of looked at the pros and cons of those versus Promethean Active Panels. Another option that we looked at, and this was actually the, the least favorite of the group that we had together in our focus group, was if we just mount a big screen TV that actually wasn't interactive and instead looked at issuing teachers tablets that would be kind of convertible touchscreen tablets. They really thought that it was important to maintain the interactivity at the center of the classroom, both for their purposes as well as for when they want to collaborate with students as well. So, that was actually the least favorite choice amongst our, our focus group. And the final one, which we've looked at in the past as well, is probably outside of the realm of interactive displays. The other predominant interactive technology that, that is used in other districts' classrooms, which is a short throw interactive projector. So, this is actually a projector that basically shines onto a whiteboard, which can also be used as a whiteboard, and then also can pick up touch or pen sensors and whatnot. The thing to note with that is the initial purchase cost of that interactive projector is quite a bit less. But when you looked at the actual total cost of ownership, it's actually roughly equivalent to the Promethean Active Panels, which is part of the recommendation before you tonight. Reason being is there's a lot of retrofitting costs that we would have to put those in our classrooms. Power would have to be ran to the ceilings. AV cabling would have to be ran from the ceiling down to the teacher's desk location. None of that is actually necessary with the active panels. So, there's kind of that retrofit cost that goes into it, as well as ongoing cost for lamps and things of that nature as well. So, obviously, you can kind of see the, the pros and cons of some of the other pieces that we looked there. And I'm happy to explore any of those more in depth if you have any questions around those. But just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what we actually looked at with our teachers. And we obviously spent a lot more time than I just did in that summary, talking about the pros and cons as well. But the end result from that focus group was, was a unanimous vote. We kind of ended the focus group after we got all their comments by having them rank their first and last choices. And it was unanimous across the ten high school teachers that we had for the Promethean Active Panels being their unit of choice. And you can actually see with the pricing in the exhibit before you that really, again, those were estimated costs that we used there. But the, the pri, the total installed cost, we're anticipating to be roughly the same as, as really the other options minus the non-interactive TV, which is a little cheaper. But again, that was kind of the last choice of our group. So, that recommendation from that focus group was actually very consistent with when we initially did a focus group with middle school teachers several years ago, when we started phasing those into the middle school on the WCC. And at that time, we actually had a couple of short throw interactive projectors in use at the very first three classrooms that were part of the WCC remodel. So, we're actually able to take the teachers to see that. And at that time, they had given us very similar feedback as well. So, we got consistent feedback from both our middle and high school teachers, which has resulted in the proposal before you tonight. So, happy to answer any questions.
What's the Active Inspire?
Active Inspire is Promethean's proprietary software that a lot of our teachers have what are called flip charts. So, think of it as an interactive Google Slides or PowerPoint or things of that, or something of that nature. So, that's something that our teachers, many of our teachers have been using for years with our active boards. That's one of the advantages of the Active Panel, is that those teachers can choose to still use those. Or obviously, there's some additional tools that they can use for lessons as well.
Does that include in the price?
Yes, it is, yep.
Because if we didn't, I saw the three lower options did not have that available. So, we would have had to use a new system and potential training costs and.
Correct, yes. With its, its only license to be usable when you're actually showing it on a Promethean display. So, with any of the other options that we went with, then they would unfortunately not be able to use that. And absolutely, that would be both a PD concern as well as a concern for our teachers to convert lessons. I will say that that's something that.
So, that they just not, all it means is they, they can't just use last year's lesson plan. They'd have to make a new, is that what you're saying, right?
Yes, but you, you do need to understand that it's not just the lesson plan. So, these are very, think of it if you made like the most advanced PowerPoint presentation in the world that had every add-on imaginable, lots of bells and whistles, animations, interactivity. It's, it's kind of like a PowerPoint on steroids. So, there's not just a simple conversion that they can do. They're talking about actually remaking the entire interactive presentation that they've, that our teachers have been spending a lot of time making those. So, that was one of the feedback from our teachers.
Don't we ask the same thing when we get new curriculum?
For new curriculum, yes, though, though teachers are provided with a lot of those resources with new curriculum as well. This is a case where teachers have spent quite a bit of time in many cases creating those.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, there's some software that goes with the Active Inspire. So, for example, if you're in a classroom, they may have a, they may, may have an interactive lesson if they're doing place value. And so, it might have, the, it comes with like a little icon with the hundreds chart, so the little ten by ten square. And then it might have strips that are, you know, ten little things, and so a bucket that you can get those out of. So, I was in, I was in a classroom and the student went up to the, and the number was six hundred thirty-seven. And so, the teacher said, show us what that means. And so, the student went to the little, they took the pen and they drug six of the one hundred charts out of the bucket. So, they drew one and it lined it up, and then they went and got another one out of the bucket. So, they just keep regenerating out of this little icon. And then they went to the, the tens, the little strips, they'll call them, I don't know what they call them, blocks ten or blocks, block strips and singles or something, sometimes they'll call them. But anyway, they drew three of those in, and then they drew seven little ones. And so, those lessons are already done. So, while they're changing their lesson plan based on who's in front of them, because it's different kids, they may go back when they're doing place value and grab that same lesson, that place value, that's already ready to go on the, the Promethean. I don't know if that helps a little bit. Or in science, they may have something where they have created a, you know, a game or a charter, and maybe they'll use it as an interact. Yeah, it could be what, whatever it is. And so, we, when we got Prometheans, we spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars having the, paying the teachers to create lessons that would be connected to some of the content learning. So, it was a consideration. Could, could we repay to do this? Absolutely, and find a new software? Absolutely, and find a new software to use. We absolutely could do that. But the teachers have said, "We really like the function of this particular software, and we've created these really great games and lessons and interact, you know, interactive things so people can see that." So they were just saying, I was there when, you know, some of them were talking, and they're like, "Well, we can redo it, we can." And there's probably other software out there that does those functions, but we've already got it ready to go. So while the lesson plan changed based on who's in front of them, the game, the activity, the, you know, the game board, the, you know, there's a, there's a reveal function, and so they may have something where they're, you know, you can put this little thing on, they can use their pen to slide it open like you would a window shade, you know, so they can reveal an answer. All of that would just have to be redone, and we can redo that. The teachers are speaking tonight and saying, "We really like the, some of those interactive things that we've prepared." And honestly, the district had some say in that too, because we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars having, we've spent a lot of extra overtime pay having, you know, when we switched over, and so some of those things are there. So I think, does that help a little bit, explain a little bit of that?
It does. It just makes me feel like we're boxed in, that's all. You know, it gives me like the same flavor that Durham does.
Yeah. We can scrap it and, I mean, we can do that.
No, no, that's, I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. I'm not discounting what the teachers are saying. In fact, what they're saying is, is the number one reason that I would go for this, is because of, what I'm saying though is, like with the other brand, were they presented with enough options? Or was, because when you do look at it, it's obvious, okay, well, that's the one I would pick too, you know? Do you feel that this was representative of everything that's out there?
I, I really do. You know, I, I talked to other UEN districts, and really, other UEN districts are split down the middle of some sort of brand of interactive display, Promethean, and there's several others that are in play, or some sort of brand of short throw interactive projectors. That's pretty much what you see in all classrooms. And then obviously, once you dig into that, there's some variations depending on the different brand of the different bells and whistles and things of that nature. But that, those two things are pretty much the standards for classrooms right now in use across the state. So I think we really did explore that pretty thoroughly with the group. The only other thing I would say, back to the point of being boxed in, is Promethean was the recommendation, Active Panels was the recommendation of the committee, and there really wasn't a reason not to go with that recommendation, because like I said, even when we're looking at pricing options, you know, all of these are relatively comparable, give or take, you know, a hundred dollars per classroom, which isn't insignificant, but also when we're talking about, you know, thirty-two hundred dollars per classroom, that's obviously a relatively small percentage. So there, from a cost perspective, from an infrastructure standpoint, there really wasn't a reason not to go with what the teacher's recommendation was.
And I think, I think my analogy wasn't as correct as it would be to say Apple versus Android.
Sure.
So if that makes more sense.
But I think that's with any technology, when you have a product of that technology, it's potentially compatible with stuff, but it isn't exact. You know, like an Apple phone or Android, you know, they're different.
Well, but Android is, Android is compatible with almost everything except Apple. So that's kind of what I'm saying. You see what I mean? There is, there is that difference.
Right, exactly. And I, I think the, the investment in the professional development is not something that we can ignore. It's not even the, it's not only the creation of the materials and the lessons, but it's the professional development that went into getting the teachers to be able to do that.
Well, and that wasn't, I knew none of that.
Yeah. Well, no, no, I know, I know, I'm just sharing more of that, because we worked really hard to get the teachers. We, we created a, like a competency, like to be, you needed to be at a certain level to, you know, you had to demonstrate that you were going to use this machine that was in front of you, and so we invested very heavily in that. And so unfortunately, we couldn't discount that investment in time and knowledge when we brought this to you today. So I just was adding that piece of it, because I kind of knew where we were gonna go with that, because we had, we'd already invested in Promethean, and we invested in the knowledge and the competency to be able to run that particular Apple phone, you know, that, so you do, and then you're like, you're pot committed a little bit on that, because you're, that's, that's the product out there.
That is helpful to know, as is when Matt had said that there are ten teachers. I didn't know that was his ten teacher cadre of tech specialists. So that, that made a difference as well.
Sure, yeah. So what Stacy's referencing is the focus group we had was members of our tech cadre, which are the building tech leaders that do a lot of the PD in their building, so they have a good pulse on their building. We thought they would be very representative of their teachers.
Do we, do we, are we able to track usage?
That's what I was gonna say, of these hundred seventy-seven.
Do we got classrooms where not highly used these things in, that we could be investing in a different technology, because we're just not, or do we have an idea that, you know, each class is, you know, we're getting, you know, seventy-five percent of our usage...
Quite honestly, there's no great magical, like just poll technical statistics of how often things are used type of thing. However, that is something that we actually look at gathering. Each year we do a, we didn't last year because of COVID, but each, beyond that, each year we do a yearly tech, tech usage and perception survey with our teachers. So that's something that we're actually, we always ask some of the same questions, but then throw in some additional questions as well, just that are relevant for that year, so that's something that we continue now. It's perception data, obviously, we're relying on both the students and the teachers to report that usage, but that's interesting. But to that point, Jesse, I guess I would also say that there are variety of ways to use this. So just because you walked in a classroom and saw a teacher not using Active Inspire, which we spent a ton of time talking about, but instead using Google Slides or just playing a video, or, you know, there's so many different ways that these can be used in engagement. There isn't necessarily a right way. The point is to actually give the teacher flexibility in the tool that they actually use for instruction. And that's why, quite honestly, the number one selling point of the active panel, what the teachers really liked was that flexibility. So allows them to still use Active Inspire. Some of our teachers have moved away from that to other things like Google Slides combined with other things. That's great, they can use that. There's the ability to use it without a computer, because it's a smart TV. It has actually some new apps built in that some of our middle school teachers have liked. So there's a variety of ways to use it, and that flexibility of, of that tool I think is really key for our teachers.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think they're great, and I think we need that. Their side of, you know, if we have a classroom that's used it, you know, one hour a week...
Sure.
Then we're putting a lot of money into one classroom that maybe we could be using a different technology that better suited for what their particular one is.
Yeah, it's, it's a valid point. I think you speak to what supports do we need to offer teachers who maybe don't feel comfortable, you know, using the, the technology as a tool, and that's certainly an active conversation that we're having as well.
If that's the reason, but I'm guessing that depending on the curriculum, the optimal number of hours of use will vary dramatically.
Absolutely, yep.
By classroom, so, you know.
We've also, sorry, go ahead, Lyle. Go ahead, sorry.
This is kind of, do the individual students have transmitters, or is that compatible with this, where, where there's a question put up and individual students click the answer, and that can be monitored by the teacher?
Yeah, so there's actually, in the old school world, you know, before we were one-to-one, there was actually like little votes and expressions that, that students could use to send that. Now, actually, in the world of Chromebooks and one-to-one, there's a lot of different ways, there, so there's different cloud-based software apps that's, that teachers use to actually gather that, that instant feedback from students. So it's, it's less about the student, you know, all of the students sending directly to the Promethean Board, but more about the, the students being able to communicate with the teacher, and the teacher being able to display that or engage with that.
So it's a totally separate feedback system?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
How, how are we cycling the old? Are we dumping it? How, how do you, do you use them at all?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Quite honestly, the, the boards themselves really don't have any value. Like I said, the, the electronics are so old that we barely can get them to work with our modern computers. What we've done in the past is the projectors, in, in a lot of cases, we've replaced the projectors, because there's, you know, big boom that comes out and a projector connected to it. So any of the new, newer projectors, we actually take, and then we'll cycle those into our elementary schools to keep any of those older projectors alive for another year. So all of those projectors we'll keep and kind of have spares and cycle those in to get us by at our elementaries. The frames themselves, we've worked with a contractor to actually do the recycling of the frames, because, you know, it's, it's steel, so that can be taken out to A-line, and we can get a little bit of recycling money for those.
You just mentioned elementary, so when will elementary, when will we see elementary come across the board?
That's a, that's a great question. We're, we're looking at hopefully next year. So this summer, the plan is to do high schools with the goal of next summer hopefully being able to look at the replacement at the elementary level.
Or do elementary be all at once, or you wanna be, you know, some of, some of probably older than others based on how the elementary?
They are, we actually, and that's why we went with high school, because high school is the oldest across the board. Elementary has a mixture of the oldest and then the one generation newer, which is still old, but we're talking ten years as opposed to twelve years, so that's why we went with high school first. We may stay our elementary, but quite honestly, we're, we'll also kind of see what the next year holds in terms of support. Like I said, with every new release of Windows, we're having difficulties actually getting them to continue to work. We've had to do some funky patching and whatnot, so that will also play into the timeline and may kind of push us forward to do all of elementary for next year.
Did we include the Lowell order in this one?
Lowell is not included with, with that, as we've, we've planned for this or a similar technology to be installed at Lowell, but Lowell will come before you as a separated purchase proposal.
Would it benefit to, I mean, better deal-wise ordering more, like if you ordered two hundred, you get a cheaper rate or something?
I don't, tacking them onto this wouldn't, I don't think lower this cost. It potentially could slightly decrease those costs. On the flip side, then we also would have to have a place to store them for six months, and the warranty then takes away for six months as well, which that warranty is rather valuable. So I kind, I actually thought of that, and I kind of considered it a wash by the time we considered that we're, you know, if it was this summer, obviously, we would have tacked it all together, but with it being another six months out, we'll also have the Central and Career Center that will also need to be done separately as well, that we might be able to combine that with.
So the middle schools have this same version?
The middle schools, with the exception of the older classrooms at Central, have this or a very similar version. It's technically like a slight model difference, but it's the same, as well as a WCC.
So we have a hundred and seventy-seven high school classrooms?
Between East West and Expo, we do.
And do you use these in the, like athletic areas for the coaches to use for their...
In some of them, yeah. So we're, we're looking at, I actually worked with Joe and Andy and looked at a few of their spaces, so there's a couple of spaces right now where they have an active board, which is maybe more of a conference room that we may just mount just a non-interactive TV, so, but there are some places, like the, the Wahawk Room at West has an interactive display, and in some of those as well, we're looking at, you'll notice there's some mobile stands included as well. So West has one of those that they've wheeled out into the commons, but they can also wheel back into like the Wahawk Room or for athletics or things of that nature. So short answer is yes.
Okay, any more questions?
I just wanted to thank Matt, because I threw a bunch of questions at him, so thank you, I appreciate it. It was very helpful.
Great.
And being one of the tenured people on the Board with Lyle here tonight, I remember back in oh eight when we purchased these, and there were teachers that just said, "I will never ever use that board, that's just silly," you know? And now I think it's a very important part of our instruction, and the teachers use it all the time, but it, it took a time to warm up to it, it really did. And a lot of PD, and I remember going into an elementary room with my kids, like you said, and they had to each count, and she knew how many hadn't submitted their answer yet, because the count wasn't in, and it was pretty interesting to watch it function. So thank you so much for all your work on this, we appreciate that. Chart was very user-friendly and could visually, visual learners liked it. Great, so I will, yeah, and India is gone, but I guess I'll call for this item. All in favor of approving the classroom interactive display purchase, please vote aye now?
Aye.
Any in favor or against? No. Okay, cheer both sides. Motion carried five zero.
I didn't know you were asking for the noes first.
Uh-oh. So it is a yes, just for clarity.
It is a yes.
Thanks.
Okay, now we will move on to our last agenda item that is interactive. It is the Human Resources Update, and that's on page fifty, item L. And I see Kingsley up here to give us an overview, and this is for information only, so go ahead.
Yes, I'll be brief. So just to walk through a couple of fine points, the current vaccination schedule, we have about ninety-one percent of those who've wanted to get vaccinated, vaccinated, so we're really excited about that. You'll see the number, it does say eighty-seven percent as of April first, and that's just because we still have some people yet to get that first vaccination. And so we're, we're working, or excuse me, eighty-seven percent of those that wanted it, excuse me, were fully vaccinated, will be fully vaccinated by April fourteenth. And so I know many of you got the change of, change of procedures email via the all-staff email today, that due to the high number of vaccinations, we're able to change some of our temperature check procedures, as well as our COVID exposure procedures. And so that has been helpful for many employees. Just with the vaccination update, you know, one of the things that's really important with what we're trying to offer with that number from Unity Point, is that we know there has been some trials and tribulations with individuals trying to receive vaccinations via the pharmacy and other places. We believe that this effort to use this or utilize this phone number will be extremely helpful for our families, that unfortunately, they got vaccinated earlier on, and we weren't able to offer that opportunity for spouses, partners, and other family members, but even as young as sixteen years old can now get vaccinated. And so we'll be talking more, actually put it on our exec agenda, to talk about, you know, whether or not we need to look at expanding, and actually, Director Paget as well, expanding some opportunities for vaccination of our, our high schoolers as well. So it's, there's a process that we want to move through, but whatever we do now will definitely have a greater impact when we come back in the fall, so we're excited about that. Just a quick hit over the vacant openings. As many of you know, it's public knowledge now that we have offered the position for the Lincoln Elementary position to Tammy Phillips, so we're excited about moving forward with that. You will see it in your Board agenda next time, because right now it's just an offer and acceptance. Director of Special Ed will be closed April twenty-seventh, and we've received several interesting candidates. We're excited about where this could lead our district in regards to our, our Special Education Department, so that's awesome as well. And then lastly, one of the, there's other things on here, but the other thing would be the lead teachers. A lot of credit goes to Dr. Mohorn as far as our change in, and I don't typically do that, so that's one for the year. A lot of credit goes to Dr. Mohorn as far as using our lead teacher program is almost a aspiring leadership program for head principal positions. And so it's just a way that we've heard from the community about the diversity of our head principal positions, the diversity of administrators in general, and this change, albeit a small change, has definitely paved the way for many of our, our black and brown teachers to have potential opportunities in our schools, and we want to continue with that as we move forward as well. Other staffing considerations, ELL Staffing will be conducting a comprehensive review. I think you've seen some of the positions that are posted, the staffing changes due to funding and also some of those recent staffing changes. We want to review where we're at with ELL, how we're supporting it, how we're supporting our students with some of those changes. Counselors, there's been a number of positions open from the Counseling Department. As you, as Marla or Director Paget already talked about, you know, social, emotional, not only curriculum, but mental health is important, and we want to make sure that we have the, the teachers in the right place to do their job in that regard. And so we're working feverishly to kind of get those filled as quickly as possible for the upcoming school year. Pair educators, I know Aster had mentioned about this, and I'm gonna come with a little bit more of a comprehensive update in regards to this in May, but just to let you know, we are, we will, we have already begun working on looking at the different pay structures within different programs. We're also convening a group of paras to hear from them their thoughts on retention. And we're working with kind of like mini focus groups to talk to them about, okay, what do you feel about the onboarding process? What do you feel about your pay? What makes you want to stay? We have that exit survey data, and so that will provide almost a guide or a roadmap to have those conversations, so people aren't just trying to come up with ideas in thin air. But we're excited about, again, another, I know that Jane always talks about it, Dr. Liman always talks about it, another collaborative process. That's something that our district really pays attention to. Yes, we're gonna send a survey out or ask you your opinion, but we also want you to walk alongside us as well when we make, you know, decisions that are ultimately gonna affect you. And then that number, I was right, Lyle, was a hundred and thirty-three resignations, retirement, and terminations since the start of the year. Twenty-five of those are teachers. Again, I'm gonna give you, I'm giving my staff kudos right now, because we're gonna go through it for the next month with all the different things that are happening, but we have a good team, we've already planned and prepared, we were ready for contracts to come out a little bit late, so if our, if we don't answer the phone right away, it's just that we're, we're trying to get as much done in a limited and truncated time. We really, our biggest concern, because we know the work that our teachers have done and our staff have done throughout this year, being impacted by COVID... We really, our biggest concern, because we know the work that our teachers have done and our staff have done throughout this year being impacted by COVID, that we're trying to truncate as much of the work to happen during the school year. So our teachers have that time to really energize themselves over the summer, take that time off to come back and be amazing when they return in the fall. So that's just something we're considering as we try to push through as things as quickly as possible. And then last but not least, and I'll then take questions, the busing update, you know, I know that Stacy had mentioned just some concerns about Durham. And our relationship has continued to grow and get better as we've had, as we've had conversations with them and really have heard your feedback. You know, many of the changes that we were making online complaint process, I believe came from Stacy and some of the concerns that she shared. I believe India had brought up, you know, with one of the billing issues, whether or not, whether or not they were, they were, we were paying bills on time. And so Michael and his team have done a wonderful job of looking at a process of handling those invoice discrepancies a lot faster. So we don't have to ask that question anymore. And then again, the board provided the prior work as far as increasing the driver pay to assist with recruitment and retention efforts. And so our relationship is moving forward, that online complaint process, really the holdup is me. I was, I just didn't get a chance to get it to the website, but we should be able to get that and then announce it to our, our parents and families. That that's another opportunity to them to work through concerns that they may have.
Is there any appetite for an open book relationship with Durham?
Yeah, that's what we did talk about. I mean, before we presented that prior proposal to y'all two meetings ago, that was a part of what we made clear that we needed to have that type of relationship. And so they did present this information that obviously we couldn't share publicly just because it, it opens the door to, you know, the private company. That's, that's inappropriate for the public forum. But I could say at this point, there is a better relationship as far as really truly understanding, okay, what's under the hood? What are truly the costs? And I believe it's going to help us have a better RFP process in the future, not only for looking at Durham, but also what other companies that may come in part of that process. Because I do believe it's something that we should always have as part of our agreement to make sure we're connecting online, especially when it comes to financials.
I think it'll help construct the next contract, whether it be with Durham or somebody else. Because by knowing or being identified the costs that are basically fixed cost versus those that are variable, when we get widespread, wide swings in number of routes, something like that, we can more easily adjust based on an equitable, you know, compensate for the variable costs plus or minus, plus or minus as opposed, you know, knowing what their, what their base cost is and then their extra cost for, for each route.
No, they, again, I wish, you know, there would be an opportunity for Jen to come here later on, you know, maybe this year. But it's been just night and day, and I think a lot of that has been your feedback and what they've heard and what we've communicated with them. There was a couple of things that y'all had just mentioned as part of the board conversation that I'd mentioned to Jen, and she automatically started, you know, going and doing a whole bunch of things and our GPS tracking, everything else. And I was like, whoa, 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 we're just asking for information. But they're, they're very, very responsive now, and I think that's just a credit to, you know, you as a board and the concerns that you shared and, you know, they are listening.
With the COVID, will this clinic always have the vaccine? What I mean is with variants coming out different, it might be different in the fall. Will this, will this be, will this clinic always have the opportunity for individuals to schedule appointments throughout? Is it going to be constant, I guess?
As of right now, you know, again, if the variant provides issues that we need to potentially offer a more comprehensive mass vaccination schedule, we'll go right back into that and provide to our employees. Right now, we don't believe, all the information that I've been given right now, we don't believe that that's necessary. But I do know that they have been talk or have, there has been talks about the fact that this would be similar to the flu that re-ups every year. So we need to think about, again, we offer a vaccine for the flu for all employees every year. I'm assuming it would be something similar to that, so we'll be thinking about that and keeping that in mind to your question.
One other question, with the openings, with the lead teacher, do we have to find a, will there be a opening with the replacement of the Hoover individual since?
You mean Lou Henry?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, there will be, and I just, I tried to update it as soon as possible, but I was like, whoa, is that presumptuous to put that on there right away? But yes, that will be another opening.
Another opening, okay.
And I was wondering, done that too for the ELL Director as?
Well, it's an ELL Coordinator, and, and again, we typically fill that with a teacher. And that's why Dr. Mohorn and I need to meet and discuss more kind of from a comprehensive viewpoint, what is necessary? As, as Jesse kind of pointed out, more from a food standpoint, but with the varying needs from a culture perspective and everything else, what are we providing, what's the service we're providing? Sometimes, you know, James heard me say this as well, you know, sometimes staffing changes present opportunities that we need to look at the positions holistically differently to figure out the service that we're going to provide. And so that's an opportunity, we may not necessarily backfill that position as it's currently constructed, it may be something else, but that's something that we're considering.
I have a question in reference to the counselor portion positions.
Yeah.
I know we have a grow your own teacher where those individuals that already have some type of degree or, when it comes to counseling, if we have individuals that are currently in the district that have teaching degrees that are already in the classroom, is there a big difference in licensure? So say we have teachers that have master's degrees, what does that look like for the possibility of getting them to come out of the classroom and possibly apply for some of these counseling jobs? If there's minimal, I, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like to have a master's degree and be an educator, be in the classroom, to get the licensure to be a counselor. I know at one point, there were, to be a counselor, I believe you had to at least be in the class, teaching the classroom for two years, I think at one point. So I don't know what that looks like, but just something to think about that, a grow your own counselor from a pool of, of teachers that we already have in the district, the possibility of them coming out of the classroom and filling those positions.
No, that's a great point, I'm going to, I mean, we, we, I've reached out to you and I. Again, we normally talk about our Teach Waterloo program and what that looks like. And again, it's kind of what next steps are in that regard. And we've already talked about, okay, we've done this for elementary, is there something from a secondary staffing that people are interested? We're already talking about expanding from a special education standpoint as well, but that would be another step that we can talk to them about. How we think about that review process when they're looking at potential interested parties in that grow your own program? What they can do is align, you know, their prior degree coursework with whatever the coursework would be, what would be the best option? Not only for the district, but also for that individual as well.
But the masters has to be in counseling, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And there's, there's different requirements.
My daughter was a teacher and she started in a different master's program and it was a lot different than the counseling.
Yeah, and there's different, there's different requirements that as they pertain to like elementary or what that counseling looks like and also like the high school level, what that counseling looks like. So we want to make sure we're balancing both those needs.
Like Jay Stacy just said, with, with the difference in programming, there can be some similarities as well to get them closer. So if it's initially, you know, I don't know, you know, it could be a year rather than two years or, or, you know, a semester or just some classes if they're already in the education, I mean, it's a, so.
Well, and you and I's already, yeah, you and I's already had success with our grow your own program currently by accelerating our program to get teachers in the classroom within two years if they have a certain degree, a level of coursework. So definitely something we can look at. I, you know, with, with the number of counseling positions that we have open and the need that's going to be ever apparent as we move forward, it's definitely something we need to look at.
But often they can start working in that position before they're fully certified.
Yeah, there's a Class B certificate, a conditional licensing that they can get. I, I don't know if it's different for other programs, for sometimes it's, they have to be two-thirds of the way done with their program before they could apply. But they have to have a degree, they have to have a BA. You can't be two-thirds of the way done with your BA, you have to have your BA, but if you're going for something else, like a principal, we've had people who are really close and so they'll, they'll get a position and they're, they're conditionally licensed for a little bit.
I think that's, that's a good point, if we have people that are familiar with the system and familiar with the students, that might be a nice transition, the last couple of years of employment that teachers might want to say, oh, hey, I'm going to counsel. So we ought to probably define exactly what that is and, and make that known.
Getting to a couple of things too, just back on the busing, this comes to mind. One, I, I still think there is a potential upside if we were able to, they will consider activity-only route drivers that you might find, some people are interested in only driving activities as someone will want to come in the evenings or they want to go somewhere with. Yeah, I'm looking back at Michael because we, Michael just brought this up recently and, and then we were talking about, you know, what that, did you bring that up recently? Okay, I just couldn't remember, and I was like, wait a minute, did Jesse bring it recently? Everything gets blurry, but yes, that's definitely something that we want to consider. Now, I don't know how that would change their, like the pay structure of what they're looking at right now, but it's definitely something that, I think when we.
It sounds like a part, it sounds like a part-time employee, you know, you're not, you're not full-time, but you're willing to, you know.
Would that affect their union?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I'm not sure about the pay structure and the union piece, but it, it definitely presents some opportunities to not have drivers having to drive, you know, multiple shifts or if you're short in one area, having to pull from different, I mean, it, it works. And that's what Michael and I were talking about before, but we have to, we have to talk to them and have a conversation.
That, that doesn't necessarily have to be a contract position either, I mean, it could be a WCS driver for activities separate from the busing contract too, if we own the fleet that we're using for that.
Yeah.
Another one, I, I really not, probably not as much as you, but I, they're buses maybe, but, you know, there was another discussion where it came up a little bit. But, you know, particularly buses, we send to activities with the newer technologies, getting wifi on these that for kids to be able to, they got their Chromebooks, they're at these events for, you know, four or five hours, can they, you know, do some homework or stuff there while they're traveling? I mean, some of these, if they're going on a, you know, if they're going to Ames or they're going to Iowa City, you're ninety minutes both ways, they could be doing work, especially if they're working with their kids.
If we were sure they were doing homework, then bring it. It brings a whole new, you know, monitoring issue, but that, you know, it doesn't mean we can't do that, but there is, there is some.
You'd have to get some good, you'd have to get some good firewalls going on that one.
Right, exactly, yep, you'd have to have some firewalls.
I've heard it done elsewhere, I don't think we're, we wouldn't be, I've heard it done in other districts, so I mean, this.
Some districts have it on their buses all, all, every bus.
Yeah.
And on Durham, I was wondering, did they ever add the cameras on the bus arms?
I don't remember, and I wanted to say yes, but I'll, I'll follow up in the weekly update. I want to say yes, that was something that, again, I think we talked about it over a year ago, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, because I just saw someone run one downtown last week and I thought, oh, I hope they get caught. But, I mean, you know, I mean, because that's dangerous, that's really dangerous, you know? So, but, and then also, I know it's kind of early because we just did the pay, have, but have they had any good applicants? Or more applicants, you know, more pools of people coming to be drivers since the?
Oh, no, it's, it's still early. You know, again, when we talked about that and shared that information, they had yet to still solidify their union contract. And so there's, it's still going to take some time.
I'm not sure how the economics would work out, but it's not beyond the realm of possibility of, of buying two or three activity buses fully equipped with, you know, design for activity buses with, with all the undercarriage storage and.
Back to buys first, you know.
And, and the wifi and, and the whole smear and then just have it separate from Durham if it's going to be a, a really a bargaining issue.
Do you sell us a particular trips, like if we're just going to Cedar Falls, maybe not, but, you know, we're going to Iowa City or?
It's definitely, I think we're talking about in terms of Durham, but I definitely think it's a, you know, a conversation with Dan Huff around, you know, what athletic, what opportunities do we need to provide for athletes and other, you know, things from an activity standpoint? Kind of bring it back from a more like programmatic piece instead of just looking at it from a Durham perspective. But I, I do think there's possibilities for sure.
Well, like the trucks that get driven to like a band concert, those are Waterloo school employees that drive those, correct? When we have a competition, right? So that's kind of, that's what you're talking about, Lyle, correct, is having something that's owned by the district?
It depends on whether there's dual use, but I'm kind of under the impression there isn't a lot of dual use. You actually need that extra bus because often these trips start during the, the normal dismissal. And so they overlap enough that you actually have to have a separate vehicle anyway.
Any more questions for Dr. Blackford? Okay, all right, now we will move on to the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you, couple things. First of all, I would remind parents, we've been sharing that we will have a Waterloo Schools Counseling, Career Counseling Center open this summer and parents will get more information. Actually, we're working on a magnet that's going to be mailed to them that they can peel off the magnet and put it on their refrigerator, put it somewhere so that they, yeah, so they have the hours of the, of the career counseling center and the locations and, and what they can do. But that will, this will be the first year for that. And Andrew, I will follow up with you when we get more information about that because I think it might be a fun article to talk about how we're really trying to bolster. I, I personally know that I, I mean, I have an eighth grader this year, and so I'm actually going to make an appointment and go in and visit with our, our, you know, our staff and just have that conversation about, let's look at the four-year plan, let's see how we're doing. And I really would hope that our parents would do the same thing. My hope is that we're super busy and that people are just saying, hey, let's just talk this out, you know? And it doesn't have to be just eighth graders, it could be a junior who wants to talk about, you know, school. So doing some training for our counselors, bringing in some additional counselors and just really going to work, work through that. So that's an exciting thing. The other thing too, that I would just add, we're, we're going to be sharing more soon. We've been really, really working on our strategic plan coming out of COVID. So I've said this before, we had a five-year strategic plan, which we actually kind of wrapped up in a, you know, packaged it up and set it on the back burner during COVID because we just couldn't implement that and, and deal with COVID as well. And so now that we're, you know, kind of coming out of the year and starting to prepare for next year, we're, we're really looking at the strategic plan. In effect, I was just looking out here, we actually have on that whiteboard, whiteboard over there, we had people in here today really working on the strategic plan. So I see, if you want to see a glimpse of it, you could see up on the wall, yeah, that's the strategic plan, just a outline of it. So really working hard on what life looks like afterwards. What we're doing is we're actually taking our previous strategic plan, of which we only had one year under our belt and the four years left. And so we're really looking at that and seeing which things still stand, and there's actually quite a bit that still stands. But there's some things that are going to need to be tweaked, given that, you know, life is different. So you're going to see more in that, we are hoping to unveil the new, the new strategic plan, that, I guess, the new post-COVID strategic plan, which, of which there will be four years left, I mean, it'll be a twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, hoping to unveil that in August. And so we've got a lot of groups together that are going to be giving input on the structure that exists and, and the board would certainly be one of those. So working hard on that. And then the last thing I would say is I was just happened to be looking at the Waterloo Playhouse opportunities coming up, and I happened to see our very own, I just had to say it because I now want to go to this. So I believe on, they're doing love letters and they're also doing the imaginators. And I think they're doing Little Miss Sunshine later on this summer, so they've got a lot of really great things. But I happen to see that Love Letters has several different stars, that every night is a different star. And you and your husband are doing April fifteenth and April seventeenth. So if y'all wanted to get tickets to the, the Playhouse, I would suggest that you go one of those two nights and see our very own Director Johnson on that. So I just said, I thought that was amazing, I saw, I read it again, I didn't know you were an actor.
Yes, it's my husband debut, but for me, this is like number six, so I'm a pro.
I'm super, I'm, I kind of, but I did it, the, the tag team of husband and wife, I wasn't sure about that, so that's great. So congratulations and thanks for giving a fun opportunity to our community.
Definitely, thank you.
And that's it.
Okay, well, tonight I'm going to start with Aster.
Oh.
Mixing it up because he always complains.
It's only because everybody takes your items.
I don't know if it's complaining, but great minds think alike though. So, but as I, as we, as I sat here, I'm listening, today I was taking some notes, and this is very relevant. On April fifth last week, had an opportunity to attend and be a part of the Men of Change Conference that was put on by the UNIQ, my employer, the UNIQ Educational Talent Search Program. And it was a fourth annual event, and it's, it's relevance to what we've talked about today. And I'll just, I just, like I said, wrote some notes down. So Lyle mentioned entrepreneurship, and that was one of the focuses of the conference. And entrepreneurship, and the presenter for that was Matt Gilbert. We had, I would say we had thirty-two young, roughly about thirty-two young men, I think it was twenty-one high schoolers and eleven middle schoolers from Waterloo Community Schools, either part of Talent Search or. either part of Talent Search or Upper Bound Program. And Matt Gilbert presented on entrepreneurship, he was one of the presenters. Laws and Regulations, and Ms. Marla Paget mentioned that when we were talking about the SRO contracts. And Lawrence Daniel, who is a juvenile court officer, presented on that. And I thought that was relevant as well. Middle school, high school counselor relationships and interactions of building personnel. And Darius Hart, who is now the counselor at Hoover, was the presenter for that session. And Mr. Ross Bauer, the principal at Central, and Ms. Marla Paget spoke on that a little bit. Just the relationships of, of building personnel and counselors. And then we had a session on mental health. And Mr. Kelvin Mackey, who is a UNI graduate and one of my fellow officials in the state of Iowa. And Dr. Lindeman, Ms. Paget and Kingsley all mentioned something in the realm of, of the important, importance of mental health awareness. And he presented on that. So, I mean, it, it was an awesome event. I don't know, I can get Tara some pictures so she can post cuz they were all Waterloo School students that attended. And just having all that in one conference and the relevance to what we talk about in our schools on a daily basis and, and just everything coming together in this board meeting, I thought it was important to mention that. Like I said, it was a fourth annual. It was the idea of Mr. Carlos Frazier, who was the senior counselor at Educational Talent Search, to put this together. I had an opportunity to, to attend the first one for a little bit and it's grown each year. This year was how, it was at the Marriott, the New Marriott by John Deere is where it was. So the young men came in, they dressed up suit and tie or shirt and tie. And it was an awesome event with some awesome presenters. And all, and everything we, like I said, everything we talked about and everything they presented is relevant to this day. So I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I had. Oh, one more thing. Want to give a shout out to Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Keith. East High had their milit, their military ball this weekend. And one of the employees of, of the district was chaperoning the event. And asked, like, is your son in J R O T C? And I'm like, yeah. So she sent me a bunch of pictures of my son doing some neat activities. So I can get those pictures to you as well if you don't have them. But an awesome event, I think it was housed at, or it was at the pavilion on the Catalinas ground. So looked, looked like a nice event, so that's all I have.
Thank you, all right, Stacy.
I had a great weekend. I got to go see my son, his junior ISU perform in the campus and concert bands, which I have not seen that child perform since winter of 2019. They haven't been able to have a performance. So it was awesome. And as I'm sitting there, I'm thinking, oh, I'm gonna get to see my daughters perform. They're gonna have an outdoor performance too. So I'm just want to encourage everybody that, you know, these, as important as sports are to the kids who do sports, these programs hold that place for these kids. This is, this is what keeps them hooked. It's what, it's what makes them, that's where Clayton made his friends, you know? So it'd be wonderful, you know? Check out your event calendars, if you can go to some, check them out.
Okay, Lyle. I have a follow-up question for Aster. Is there, is there a follow-up plan to that annual? In other words, is there anything between year, year after year? Or is it a, just an annual event? And I'm just, it sounds terrific and I'm just wondering if there's contact made with these kids sometimes?
Well, yeah, it, well, the students that were participating in the program are part of one of the trio programs, either Classic Upper Bound or Educational Talent Search. So we have interaction with them and, and serve them in a variety of ways throughout the school year. And the summer as well, we host a summer program through Educational Talent Search. I think we're gonna be housed at, and it's gonna be in person this year. For Talent Search is gonna be in person. Upper Bound is still gonna be virtual. Talent Search, I believe it'll be housed at Hawkeye Community College. And it'll be two sessions, two-week programs. And I believe a total of sixty students will be able to participate in that. Upper Bound, like I said, they're going virtual again. They're normally on campus at the University of Northern Iowa and they get to stay in the dorms. But it'll be ninety percent virtual and ten percent in person, is that correct, India? I think India had to correct me. So they'll still be in person. So we still have communication and contact with those students, other than just the conference. But the conference is, is once a year. We do that conference.
That's great. Just to comment on the COVID, I see some, some colleges are requiring vaccine before they can do in-person this fall. So we might want to focus on seniors, give them an opportunity if, in case they don't know. Plus, the spread is migrating towards that age group fairly, fairly rapidly. So that might be something we can offer. Number two, when are the, when's the WCC central bid? It's coming up, isn't it?
I wanna say it, the bid bidding is the twentieth, twentieth of April or twenty-second? What is it, Pam? Twenty, it's right in the early twenties.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
So the twenty-second, okay. And then we were talking about bussing, I just, do we know from an athletic standpoint, what our travel, our schedule's gonna look like in the next? Or is it too premature? No, okay. All right. That's it.
That's it, thank you. All right, we will go to our Hollywood India.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to give a shout out to the students who made it through ISAPs. My daughter was extremely happy at the end of it, but it went pretty well. I mean, they even talked about how smooth it went. So I just wanted to give kudos to the staff and the administrators who got, allowed the students to get through it. And it'll be interesting to see what the results will be next year for, yeah, for us to look over that. But I'm glad that they were able to do it this year, if we couldn't do it last year. So, yeah, that was it.
Jesse?
I just have one thing. I want to just personally thank Dr. Lindeman and her staff and people from the city of Waterloo who, you know, worked together to get us a in-person graduation, a place to have that. You know, as a parent, I had a senior last year versus a parent had a senior this year. This is huge, we'll have that on time and in here. And appreciate all the work that went into at least, we can have a ceremony for these, these young adults here going across. So, thank you.
Okay, and I had a question for Aster as far as that program. You have to be in one of those programs though. So just like a student couldn't come, they have to be in one of those programs?
Correct, as of now. I'm not sure if it'll be opened up.
Okay, cuz I thought that would be an awesome opportunity for like.
But they're easy, but they're easy to join.
Yeah, they're, well, yeah, somewhat. We, we service up to twelve hundred students.
And then how does you wean that down to thirty-two students?
It was, it's, this portion of it was African-American males.
Okay, okay. All right, perfect. Well, thank you, I just wondered those questions. So, and I just had a couple notes. Our next board meeting will be April twenty-sixth, two weeks from tonight at five o'clock. And that will have a lot of exciting things on that agenda. And just to bring up also that, the graduation dates one more time is Expo is on Monday, May twenty-fourth at six PM at Expo. West High is Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at six PM. Thursday, May twenty-seventh, six PM at Young Arena. So if you have a graduate, you will be getting protocol. And it'll be an exciting event for all of our seniors to have a big ceremony this year. So, but with that.
That's the May.
Yeah, that's the May twenty-fourth, yeah. May, I was like, wait, it says five. Yep, May twenty-fourth is the start time to, so we can make it for the Expo graduation. So, yes, and the twenty-sixth of April is at five. So with nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you, we adjourn. Okay.